Another March meeting for the March of April. So glad to have everybody here, welcome. And we'd also like to welcome those that's joining us via YouTube this morning. So with that being said, we're gonna ask Supervisor Trainer, if you don't mind, would you lead us in a word properly?
Yes, sir, let us pray. Father God, we come this morning and say thank you, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to be here on this day, Father. We ask for your guidance and your direction, oh Father, as we contemplate and deliberate and discuss and make decisions on things that will benefit the people that have sent us here to serve, Father. We thank you for things as what they are, and we're praying, oh Lord, that as things materialize and as things be what they are, Father. We just ask you to just keep us in perfect peace and help us to just keep our mind stayed on thee, Father. We pray that once our business is done here, that you'll give us traveling grace to go our separate ways and find things where we may go. In Jesus' name we pray, let it be heard, say amen, amen, amen.
Thank you Supervisor Trainer. We don't have a terribly long agenda, and hopefully we'll be able to move through it pretty swiftly this morning. So next on our agenda, we have our citizens' comment period. This is the time when any citizen can come before the board for up to three minutes with any issue that you have concern about. So we are now open for our citizens' comment period.
State your name, ma'am. Just come out and look.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Natalie White, I'm on the phone here. Well first, Natalie White, the H I T. First, I would like to thank the board for allowing residents of Montgomery Woods area, Horseshoe Circle to express a few concerns. Thank you to Mr. Ben Carver for answering my personal call to address the concerns I presented to him from myself and several neighbors. We, he did communicate some improvements that are being made to that road. I am very concerned about the continuous car rates on Horseshoe Circle that always result in neighbors having damage to their cars, fences, mailboxes, and yards. Even if we sue the person, we end up still paying the cost due to not receiving all the funds, which that has happened in my, in my case with the drunk driver running his truck into my yard. I do have photographs, if you'd like to see them. Some individuals, some individuals that live in the Sunset community are racing on Horseshoe Circle and driving at a high speed limit. We can barely walk to the mailbox due to cars not slowing down. Last month, someone coming from Sunset flipped their car on Horseshoe Circle into someone's yard. It was said this individual was drunk. My ask, our ask is that speed bumps are considered because neighbors are already spending money for damage being done to our property. Speed bumps may not make everyone happy, but it will prevent someone getting hurt and decrease rates. That's all we have.
Thank you Natalie.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you Ms. White.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Trainer to acknowledge. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aight.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good morning, Lord. Again, thank you for allowing the residents of District Two offer Patch Station Ballard Lane. I stand before you this morning to talk about the conditions of our roads.
Would you state your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Hazella Rogers. And I'm, I'm standing before you concerned about the roads where I live in that area, of course. There's never enough gravel on the road. We have buses that comes through that actually push most of the gravel off. So when that happens, when it rains, we are slushy. We are, I mean, we're in mud. And it is not my or the other residents' responsibility to call and say, "We need rocks on the road." My mailbox has been knocked over several times. And I recently got cameras because I need to see who's doing it, and it's because of the roads are so bad. Patch Station has been paved and we're thankful for that. But Ballard Lane, when you come through that area, it is a total mess. No one should have to drive to get home in those conditions. So not only am I speaking for myself, but the, the other residents of that area. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Need a motion to acknowledge?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams, that we acknowledge any further discuss, discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aight.
Motion passes unanimously. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. How y'all doing this morning?
Doing great, how about you?
All right. My name is Ms. Mary Kelly. And I'm talking about our road, the Clifford Lane Road off of Rock Hill Road. And just like she was saying, our road is a mixture. And the buses come up in there, and the garbage truck comes up in there, and they make ruts where it's muddy on the road. And the holes are coming all across the road, right when we turn off the road. And now one of them will go around and curl up to the house, and it's just a mess out there, it's a mess. And if y'all would please try and do something about it for us. Yeah, 'cause don't, after a while, you know, the way I'm looking at it now, after a while, ain't nothing gonna get to come up in there. Bus, or rock truck, or nothing. Yep. It's really bad, and not just our roads, you know, I think all roads are like that, but the main road, it really do need fixing too, the main road. Because you have to drive on both sides of the road if they ain't nothing coming head on for to try to get where you're going, because it's so rough out there. It'll take a ride. It'll take a ride up. Yep, and then they just come out there and they pull a little stuff here and a little stuff there, and that just make the humps even worse. So that's what I have to say about our road.
Thank you Ms. Kelly.
Thank you ma'am.
Okay.
Need a motion to acknowledge?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aight.
Motion passes unanimously. Good morning.
Good morning. How y'all doing? It's me again, Brenda Kelly. And I know y'all remember me. I'm, I'm coming for the same thing. Now, Bother Lane on, on Kelly Road. That's family lane, one of the first roads that probably been there. And I was coming because I feel like when they paved just a portion of it, it wasn't fair to, to my family. So that's why I'm coming by Kelly Road. And as far as, sorry, as far as Clifford Lane, that was brought up because that road is divided. Where the rocks and stuff are going up on that, on that road, you got a big old sink in it. So that road do need attention. And we, we brought it up the last time we was here. And I thought it would be, it would be fixed by now, but I see that they had done anything about that road. And as far as the main road, we have holes out there, it needs to, some attention. And I know you can't do everything at the same time all at once, but the point is, is that if we don't bring it to you all, who do we take it to? To try to get something, get something done and get it done and right. So I just wanna, want that to be known, that we are concerned about Clifford Lane. We are concerned about Kelly Road still, and I'm always gonna be concerned about it, and we are concerned about our main road. And, uh, let somebody-
The main road. The main road.
Holes and stuff.
I mean, what's the name of that?
Sixteen section, Rocky, Rock Hill.
Sixteen section, Rocky.
It's Rock Hill, really. All right, I ain't gonna stay as long as he last said.
Thank you Ms. Kelly, with the motion to acknowledge?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mary Kelly.
Good morning.
And also, I'm here to piggyback right on the roads, the gravel roads. Three eighty-five Clifford Lane, and like my mom was saying, the sixteen section, Rock Hill, that's how I see it. It's like when you come into the road, it's drivable, but once you get past that bridge, it's just a mess. Like she said, you pretty much have to drive on both sides. And with that being said, it costs a lot of costly car repairs. And it really needs to be addressed. And also, I was told that, that, uh, the last time you guys were going to proceed, but someone said it was not enough dust? Am I, I missed the last meetings, but Ms. Hill was telling me about that someone said that it was unperceived-
I don't think any comment like that.
Okay, well, maybe that did, but I was told something, because I was thinking, you know, I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, but I ain't the dullest neither, but I would think you would guys want to start on the road before the dust gets out of control, you know? But with that being said, again, concerned about the gravel road, three eighty-five Clifford Lane, and our main road, Rock Hill, sixteen section. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Motion to acknowledge?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aight.
Motion passes unanimously. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Lisa Logan, and that was my family, the last three that got up. So I'm here for the same reason. I'm just, you know, been hoping and praying that y'all could do something about the roads. I know y'all get tired of looking at us, I get tired of looking at y'all too, but I have to get up and come anyway, to complain. And that's all I have to say, I'm just hoping and praying God that some come through for us. Thank you, amen.
Thank you. Uh, motion to acknowledge?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Latonya Allen Kelly. I live, um, out at two eleven Ballard Lane. I was, uh, coming this morning just to, to address the issue on our road about the gravel. Um, it's mostly not in the best condition, there are issues, kinda, sorta. When the bus comes through, um, it just throws the rocks all over the place, all in the yard. And sometimes, when I cut my yard, like I have put a window out with those rocks. Also, the road, it's not maintained as good as it should be, it has potholes. Even on the entrance coming in, a lot of times, there is this big hole when you come in the road that will just, I mean, it, it may even knock the line out of your vehicle if you're not, you know, just paying a close, close attention to it. Um, I was just trying to see about getting the road paved and if we had any, you know, options to, to get that done with. And that's all I wanted.
Thank you for coming. Uh, motion to acknowledge?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aight.
Motion passes unanimously. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Hill, and I just want to address another thing, uh, I know you can't do anything with the road right now because it went with, uh, with all this rain going down here and washed part of the road out. But I do also want to clarify, the last time that I was here, Mr. Collins did say it was not enough, uh, dust on the road to put the stuff down. Now, he did say that.
Amen.
He said that.
Yes.
I heard you.
He said that.
Yes.
But he was saying it. But thank y'all for listening to me.
Thank you.
Come with a drum, I just, you know, won't let you know that part right there.
Thank you so much. Motion to acknowledge?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Maddie Sanders, and I also live on Horseshoe Circle, going into the Sunset, uh, community. And I wanted to reiterate what my neighbor said about the traffic area, the traffic over there, it is pretty rough. Um, I've been living there, uh, since two thousand seven, and I've had several accidents in my yard. I've had two cars to be hit. And I would just like for, you know, someone to come and just look at that road because it's very off level. And we do have a lot of young people that comes around that corner that, you know, is racing. And they lose control, they flip, and they roll into our yards, and they tear our yards up. So the picture, pictures that she showed was actually, that truck, it jumped my yard, barely missing my cars for a second time, and stopped in her yard. So I just feel like it needs to be some speed bumps or something added over there. It's a convenience, but we really need that because at the time, I had young children, which they've grown up now, but I had young children that be out playing in the yard, and cars would come through. And once they hit that curve and hit that stretch, it's just open field for a race. And I just feel like, you know, we just need some type of speed bumps or something to limit the speeding over there. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, motion to acknowledge?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aight.
Motion passes unanimously. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Patricia Nguyen, uh, District Two. Along with Ballard Lane, there's also Paradise Lane. And that's where I reside.
What lane is that?
Paradise, it's right off of Ballard, yes, it's a left turn off Ballard. And I just want that for the record, also, not just Ballard, but also Paradise Lane, if you can. But I guess you would have to do Ballard first before you do Paradise. But I hope they are in a line. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Uh, motion to acknowledge?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Williams, any further discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aight.
Motion passes unanimously. Is there anyone else for our citizens' comment period? If there is no other, we will consider our citizens' comment period closed, Mr. Turner. Okay. Not today, Mr. Turner?
Every other, every other, every day. Well, good, good, good to see you. All right, good. We gonna, we gonna consider our citizens' comment period closed, yeah.
There's, there's some chairs up front of, of Turner, if anybody outside that want to come in and sit there?
We'll move on in our agenda, next we have approval of our, uh, March Board Minutes. Motion for approval? Motion by Supervisor Williams for approval, second by Supervisor Little. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We now have, uh, Joe Max Higgins, uh, from the Golden Triangle Regional Airport Board, and Matt, Matt Dowd. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Thank y'all for your time this morning, we're gonna tag team then, and I'm gonna start by giving some, uh, some history and the lay of the land, and then Matt's gonna cover more specifics. Most y'all see there, Joe. Alright, so, kind of a, kind of a story here. This is the area out by Golden Triangle Airport. As most y'all know, it's been growing, uh, the aerials are not up to date, so there's stuff that's built that's not shown on here, but airport's here, steel plant, pack car, commuter university, commuter university, pack car out there in the area, and then you've got all this area that has developed. Important for everybody to understand is, years ago, uh, the airport, uh, acquired some property for a crossing runway that was to go here, give us a second runway for future airport expansions. When the steel, when the aluminum mill came in, they, uh, uh, they needed all of this land. About twenty-two hundred acres, a lot of it was county owned and then privately owned. We had areas for the airport to grow and expand industries locating on the airport. Well, when the aluminum mill came in, they wanted all this property, including the airport's hundred and fifty acres for the crossing runway. We traded, when I say we, the collective we, we traded GTR, their hundred and fifty acres for a parcel of land along this road for a parallel runway. So we didn't, we didn't take away our runway capability, but instead of having a crossing runway, we had a parallel runway. But, but Steel Dynamics has taken up all of this land, twenty-two hundred acres for the, for the steel mill and their customer park. Uh, that leaves us notting land for airport-related industry, okay, airport-related industry. Stark Aerospace is, is here, and, and here and here, located on a portion of, portion of the airport property, uh, and, and their privately owned property. We've got meetings with them next week, they're doing an expansion right now. Uh, we got meetings with them next week about taking more land down for future expansions. Airbus is doing an expansion with Solar Farm here, they've got this area about where my finger is left for expansion. And then Aurora is doing about a forty-seven million dollar expansion, uh, right here, they're getting pretty well landlocked. So with this happening, we find ourselves with no land to show to any more aircraft manufacturing companies that would locate it, okay? This property was being used by the crossing runway, once that was changed, it became more marketable, more desirable. What happened was, a private sector guy came in from out of state, was gonna buy it, and, and he said, "I'll put warehousing, uh, or migrant housing, or whatever I can do to make a buck." Well, that's not, that's not desirable when you're flying in to see migrant housing by your airport. So the landowner couldn't come to terms with him. So we, Matt and I slid in, said, "We've got a, we got a chance to make this right." We said, "Hey, we'd like to, we'd like to talk to you about the possibility of getting this land." It's important for y'all to see kind of what we're, what we're talking about. Uh, this is kind of a blown-up parcel. This is Boeing Aurora, this is the airport terminal, this is the aluminum mill over here, the area that we're playing, this green, Airport already owns. GTRI bought that a few years ago. Uh, that was being looked at, it's, for some of you old heads ain't come to buy old, see, you've been here a while. Remember Hawker Beach Craft, I mean Trainer, that was, that was a Hawker Beach Craft site. Well, these are the parcels that we're trying, trying to buy. Uh, Matt's been working real hard and got an FAA grant of about a million dollars to buy this parcel of land, uh, right here. And then the parcel we're here today to talk to you about is this, it's the same landowner. It'll, it'll be the same, purchase from the same landowner, it'll be two different tranches. Uh, and so what we're proposing is that we go to the counties and, and, and cities that own the airport and, and, and get participation on this. This side also allows us to do some things that we've not been able to do. There's a rail here, Kansas City, Canadian Pacific, Kansas City Southern runs here now. We are looking at the possibility of possibly doing intermodal at the airport, much like Huntsville does. We've been tracking and modeling Huntsville on some things that they're doing, uh, to give us more flexibility. Uh, without this, GTR is pretty well limited to, uh, that's all the aerospace industries will be able to locate out there, okay? So, uh, I think that's all, we're gonna cover with that. Now, Matt, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt and let him answer any questions you've got on how the, how the deal works, what the deal is. Oh, yes, I do want to add one more thing. So, and it's, it's in some of the worksheets. But we've got this property under option for eighteen thousand-
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's his job, two hundred and fifty dollars, an acre. So y'all know, uh, this property was, was gifted with a higher value than that, this property was purchased at twenty, this property was purchased at twenty-five, and the Lowndes County Supervisors closed last week, week four last, on a thousand acres at twenty-two thousand an acre, okay? So for those of you that are wondering, boy, that's awful expensive land, it's less than the other parcels that we bought in the last two years. Matt?
Thanks. Um, I'll just reiterate a little bit of what Joe mentioned, but we do have a one million dollar grant that we're trying to leverage. Um, so we're trying to raise the remaining one point one. Um, as many of you know, uh, the Golden Triangle Regional Airport is a gateway to the entire region in the Golden Triangle. Many people, um, in addition to just using that for both transportation in and out, greeting visitors, they also work out there, like myself. I live in Oktibah County, I've been here for twelve years, but I work out in the industrial park out at the airport, and it's really been a hub for aerospace and aviation manufacturing. And so we want to see that continue, we want to make sure that, uh, this opportunity isn't missed. And so by having this land adjacent to the airport, strategic land that can access the runways, the taxiways, all that infrastructure that for fifty years has been invested in, we can continue to see that workforce grow, those expansion sites be available to continue to bring in that workforce. Uh, folks who, who work in the entire Golden Triangle, including Oktibah County, continue to have work options out at the Golden Triangle Regional Airport. Um, so what we're looking for is an investment of twenty percent based on the stake that Oktibah, uh, has, uh, out at the Golden Triangle Regional Airport. We're trying to secure a loan right now for the one point one, targeting six percent interest rate, which would mean a fixed, um, payback per year of thirty thousand dollars. Um, and then that would pay off the loan, uh, for a ten-year period. Anything I missed, Joe, in that summer?
Well, we'd be remiss if, if we weren't up until the last minute, we're in a hundred and twenty days due diligence. We would be remiss if we didn't tell you that we're, we're trying to turn over every rock we can, uh, until we make the loan. Uh, we had had some hopes that, uh, we might get a, a little bit of help from the legislature. They went home, uh, they're probably gonna come back, uh, we just don't know what the, the status is. I, I'm reluctant to say the word grant, because that's all everybody ever hears, Patty, you'll hear, you said grant. Uh, but, 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 but we're still trying to turn over all the rocks, and we think this is probably worst-case scenario. And one other thing, before you, you talk about the money, that I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't save this draw and got it on here, I'll bring your money back. This strip of land, we're really gonna talk about from about here down to here, this strip of land that separates New Airport Road from this parcel, this is owned by Lowndes County and retained by Lowndes County as a, as a block to something that we did not, if we, there was something we didn't want to happen. In other words, we didn't want a guy to put migrant housing or whatever they might have put here, and then have access to, to Airport Road. So we did this as, as a strategic block. Uh, I talked to all five of the Lowndes County Supervisors, if everybody funds this, if the, the GTRI buys this land, we will then go back to the Lowndes County Board of Supervisors and ask them to gift this property to these two parcels. It's about twenty acres, about twenty acres that we could gift back. We've got faith and confidence that with, with, that GTRI will do right by putting somebody there. And we also know that the Federal Aviation Administration is going to be very particular about what goes there, so we think there'll be sufficient control. So that will drive our average cost per acre down a little bit.
So you said this is the worst-case scenario if you don't get another penny?
Yes, sir. We had originally, we had originally tried to use, uh, MDA's got a one percent program for airport revitalization, that's what we used to buy that light green. Uh, Mr., we talked to Mr. Cork, he said, "Look, we've got, we've got some projects working. I'd rather spend that money for brick and mortar, things going up than just purchasing land." I, 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 I couldn't even argue with him, Mr. Howard, I just said, "Fair, fair enough." He said, "You got local opportunities with banks?" I said, "We do." I will tell you this, and we're not, and we're, we're not here asking that, but, but we were kind of shocked last week. The city of Columbus, uh, rather than commit to their ten-year payment, just hand the check, already got it in hand. They just hand the check to their chair, so, uh, that's already, uh, we know we got that money, it's already in hand. Clay County has approved, Columbus has approved, um, who else? Starvis has approved. Uh, uh, y'all in Lowndes are today, and West Point, uh, City Council is tomorrow night, and that'll, that'll wrap it up.
Did the airport, did the airport own the property that Steel Dynamics purchased? And I guess when Steel Dynamics purchased that property, was those funds in any kind of way reinvested into something else to benefit and to to buy additional property?
Fair, fair question. So, so what happened was the airport owned a hundred and fifty acres here. The aluminum mill's set here, okay? We went to Matt, his team, and said, "Look, we're trying to win this project, we need you to give this property up." Okay, we need you to give it up. The airport's position was, we've got a crossing runway there, we don't want to limit ourselves, we're, we, you look out for industrial development, we look out after, uh, after the airport. So what we did is, we per, we took land that, that, that Lowndes County Industrial throwing on, private sector land we had to buy, and we traded GTR a hundred and fifty acres for-
Hundred and eighty-five.
A hundred and eighty-five acres parallel and adjacent to the runway, to allow them for a second runway to be built in the future. They said, "That's, that works, that's actually preferable," I think y'all seen it. Uh, uh, and, and, and they netted out more acres. So that, that cost was borne by the Lowndes County Board of Supervisors. But the trade, if it had been a hundred and fifty acres for a hundred and fifty acres, would have been a slick, fair trade. It was a hundred and eighty acres for a hundred and fifty acres. And we had to pay twenty-five thousand for this forty acres and twenty thousand for the Ballard side, and then we'd already bought this. So there was no money, to answer your question, Mr. Williams, no money traded hands. Uh, the airport ended up with more land at the end of it than they started out with, but no cash. That, that, yeah, that's a good question, by the way.
Any other questions?
Well, it'd be fair to say, so this board is aware of this, that if you don't purchase this, this limits the ability for this airport to have any growth in, in direction of it.
For, for industri, now, for, 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 speak to airport operations, that's your, your gig, I agree with that.
And as Joe, uh, mentioned, we, we want to have a strategic ability to grow the infrastructure, like an added runway, and that's what we got, we did the land swap with the aluminum dynamics. So it's really the industrial development that we intend to use this land for. It will remain the ownership of the airport, we lease that land. So it's really having additional sites so that we can continue to bring in investment and companies and jobs to the airport.
And long term, it's, it, let me tell you one that's important, y'all. I've been here twenty-one years, I think, for my guys that's been on a while, I think three times we've been before this board and asked for help. Uh, when, when Eurocopter came in originally, okay? Uh, the recent marketing, when we got the marketing grant, uh, uh, to, to- Uh, the recent marketing, when we got the marketing grant, uh, uh, to, to, to bring in American Airlines, and now this, okay? So three times in the last, since you've been sitting in that chair, I think three times. It wouldn't be uncommon for y'all to have in your budget, normal funding for your regional airport. But they've done a good enough job in running it, and here's one reason why. With Stark, with Airbus, with Boeing, and the other companies out there fixing to be us, the link, you can't own the land, you have to rent it. So those annual lease payments that are, that are indexed go towards helping offset their operational costs. Uh, and having land that they could then lease, we lease, we're gonna lease about two acres for our office. It's gonna cost us fifteen thousand dollars a year, and that index is up, that's, that's first year fifteen thousand. That's gonna be our annual land lease, we cannot own the land, well, own the building, we cannot own the land. But this is, this, this money, this, this land would be intended to be the same way.
So if we commit to this one as the first payment expected?
Sometime after October.
Next FY, yeah, and we did that on purpose for all of y'all because we knew that would be a trade in this FY.
Seems to be a good investment.
Well, we think it is, I mean, I, tell them, tell them you value their partnership, I mean, this is working.
That's right, no, this is your airport, and so we don't wanna, we wanted to bring for you, before you this opportunity because the land is for sale. You know, there are other people who are interested, but this is a great opportunity to work with the link and have this development site.
I think we hit, I think we hit an emotional strain with the landowner. Her father was an Eastern Airline pilot, he bought this land when the airport was announced. Cause he knew that land was a good investment around an airport, he's been long past, Mr. Rock, some of y'all will remember him. Uh, but I think she's got, she got, she got airplane, uh, uh, blood flowing through her veins, and it's, it's a good deal. Uh, tell the, we, we usually have a thirty-three person team here, tell them why their reps not here and.
Right now, the Lowndes County is having the same meeting, uh, going, going over.
They're, they're, they're board members.
Oh, Trey, yeah, sorry, yeah, Trey obviously works for Mississippi State, I think he's contacted some of you or attempted to. Um, basically showing support for this deal, but he's been strategic, obviously his representation on the board helps lead us, uh, to financial success, continued growth. American Airlines is coming on May fifth, so we've had a lot of big wins and a lot of successes, and we're trying to continue to compound those successes.
Structure, FY.
Yeah, and, and there's other expansions going on right now in order to meet the demand of higher, uh, and additional, uh, passenger loads that we've seen. Another airline, we're having our very first jet bridge project going on right now, so the twelve million dollar investment to grow the terminal space, to have a jet bridge, and really have the same amenities that you have at Figueroa Airport, uh, something on our scale, um, that our community will all benefit. Coming and going, bringing in visitors, economic development, uh, folks who come in to see our, our region. Uh, this is really a gateway to our community and a hub for.
And we're talking about our industries out there, biggest customer year in, year out?
Mississippi State.
Second biggest customer year in, year out?
Um, so that's probably Columbus.
Air Force Base.
Air Force Base, and then Airbus helicopter.
So, uh, Mississippi State was, is, and probably will be for a long time, the number one user of that airport.
Think there's a flight that's gonna be two and frozen Dallas.
That's right, May fifth is when, uh, the American Airlines, for the first time in thirty years, they've been at the airport. So we'll have multiple options, you got Delta Airlines service and now American, so whether you're going east or west, we've got you covered. So it'd be much easier for people to come in and out of our market.
Your ad I heard this morning said the two biggest hubs in the United States you got access to. Dallas-Fort Worth, Atlanta-Locke.
That's right.
Make a motion we move forward, do you have any?
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Little, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye. Thank y'all.
Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, uh, we have, um, engineer Mr. Clyde Fritsch, good morning.
Good morning. Just a couple of things as far, one, you had asked us to go through the county and inventory these smaller pipes, culverts, bridges that weren't getting looked at. I'm gonna leave this hard copy with you, and Mr. Partner, I'll, Partner, I'll send you this in a PDF. But this is the map we generated of smaller structures in the county. Uh, by district, District One, we've got forty-six, District Two, thirty-seven, District Three, forty-nine, District Four, sixty-one, and District Five, sixty-two. So we've got those on the map, we've got a number on them, ID. We're trying to work Carl, so he can get them nailed down in his GIS system. But the next step for y'all would be to authorize us, if you want them inspected, to put them on some kind of schedule and have us look at them. We think probably somewhere on the order of two hundred dollars per each would get them looked at, get you a, whatever frequency you, you want, report. Or we come in and say, number eighty-eight, number one seventy-four, and then blah, 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 it needs work. Now, we'll need to go through that exercise one time to see, could not be that much, could be a little more now, that's just our best guess right now.
And what, like, what would that report entail when you say, okay, this one needs work? Does it mean like it needs work, like a head wall fix, is that gonna be part of it?
Whatever our technician, engineer sees at the time, head wall repair, uh, sinkhole in the road before the bridge, metal covert has rusted out completely, those are one of our biggest dangers in there. Uh, some of these are metal, some of them are plastic, some of them are small box culverts that are just not getting checked. What we would do is try to incorporate this with a semi-annual bridge inspection, where we're out there anyway, working these roads on the larger bridges, and pick them up as we get on a schedule.
So how, yeah, how long would it take for the whole project to be done?
We don't know. Again, it's, it's two hundred and forty-five structures to look at, and again, we have to count, try to get them on a list, on a schedule. Your major bridges we look at every two years by state law, and you may want these on a schedule, you may want them more frequent, you may want them less frequent. I don't, I don't know. But this is what you got, as best we can tell, to deal with. We may pick up one or two more, but we physically rode these roads, tried to identify all these structures, and that's the list we have right now.
As most of them, state aid roads are county roads. After the state aid roads, we have, we're going through a whole process of getting them repaired after the bridge work has been done.
Correct, and, and they're.
That's what's going on on my type of road.
There are some of both, and they are numbered on here, but by Lord, these are on your county roads.
So these, these are not bridges that's currently being inspected?
These are not structures, uh, these are structures that are not currently being looked at under the state aid and the MBI. These are small boxes, larger pipes, and culverts that we're literally riding over every day that nobody's looking at. Until y'all get the call, or Vic gets a call that says it fell in, and then we're going to look.
So, so working with you and Carl and identifying, numbering, and is there a way that you can coordinate this with our road department also and, and see if, you know, Carl's shaking his head, yeah?
Sure.
See if there's a way that we can possibly expedite so everybody, uh, uh, get something uniform so everybody'll know what to go when you approach that.
I think we identify, and, and Carl's been absolutely great to work with, first thing was to go find them, and we think we found them. And now we just need permission to go look and devise a schedule and know what frequency you want us to look at.
Don't we want them all to be, like, get cleaned, swept on all of them first, and then put them on a schedule? You know, to be re-inspected every other year? But I think we need to be, have them all inspected first.
And, and graded.
Yeah, and graded, and then re, you know, and then put on a annual or semi, I mean, you know, by annual, I mean, to the annual.
What we would think is, again, an initial inspection and Supervisor Howard has asked me a couple of times, are we looking at these as, well, we try to find them first. So what we would do is produce you a first report, which is where I think you're gonna identify it by district, put some type of grade on them and say, this needs work, this needs work, this needs work, this needs work. And then after that, we could decide what kind of schedule to put them on. Cause there's probably gonna be, in all fairness to your road manager, there's probably gonna be more work that needs done than he can get to right away.
So I guess, I guess my, my concern would be with surface repair after the work has been done, uh, whether the county, and maybe you'll make a notation on, on that too, as to whether or not the county will do the surface repair, or whether or not we had to bid that work out.
I think that's gonna be on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
I think, you know, if it's a, if it's a small concrete box, culvert is about to fall in, that's one deal. If it's a thirty-inch pipe that's rusted out, that's another deal.
Could you make some kind of notation as to whether or not you think the county could do surface repair?
Sure, sure.
These, these are or are not state aid room?
Some are.
Combination?
It's a combination of both.
Some ground roads, some paved roads.
And our, in my instruction to our engineers, technicians looking, we didn't tell them to delineate, we just said, go ride them and find them.
Now, you, you mentioned that these are assets that are not currently listed as state aid assets, meaning long span bridges, that sort of thing.
These are not currently being inspected under the state aid bridge inspection system.
So my question becomes for Carl, are we able to get a consolidated list of all of the assets in the county to include the, the ones that are not on this list?
Yes.
I'll answer part. I'm gonna give you a second sheet of this.
Yes, sir.
And a third sheet. The second sheet's gonna identify all the state aid, federal aid stuff.
Yes, sir.
Then there'll be one that's got everything on it, okay? This is the smallest band.
And, and to that point, we will have the Latin long locations as well as, um, certain attributes as to whether or not it's a culvert, a concrete, uh, box culvert, we'll be tracking those kind of attributes, Carl, is that the plan?
So, yeah, the thing left to do is, after the engineer and technician went out and found it, they produced a, a static map, if you will. A lot of these assets are in the GIS system already.
Right.
A lot of them are not. So now the next step is to merge that into the actual GIS system, which will make it easy for the board, yourself, anybody else who wants to look at it, Victor, to look at it. Um, so we've got some work to do to take it from this static map and merge it in the GIS system, but it won't be hard.
We, we've got them ID'd now, whether they're metal pipe, flashy pipe, box culvert, and roughly what size they are.
Right. Is, is there a way to take that information and make certain that, now, I know there's certain technical stuff that the engineer or our board may wanna look at, but we have an awful lot of people come up here asking questions about certain roads. And I think it would be beneficial as board and for the public to be able, for them to see what, what we're trying to accomplish. Is there a way for that, that information to be shared with, with, with our constituents? Cause I mean, we had, we had ten people today that were asking questions, and I think that would be beneficial to them.
Right, definitely on the roadmap for this year. That's a, one of my goals, and I know it's one of Clyde's and everybody else's working with this, but right now, as Clyde said, it was basic discovery, what do we have? Right, and then we've gotta map it, and then we've gotta be able to present it, so it'll flow in stages.
I'd like to make the motion we authorize the county and the engineer to develop the Small Structure Drainage Inventory Program System.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, I'll second that. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Do you know when we can expect a report back? I think you may have said you don't.
Well, you just said Golden, two hundred and forty-five. Um, so I would think we'd have something by the end of the summer.
Sound good?
Could we restate what we're calling this, I don't want to get this messed up.
Small Structure Drainage Inventory System Program. Small Structure Drainage Inventory System Program.
Thank you.
And, and again, Rob, so you understand, so these, these range from thirty-inch pipes to nineteen-foot chop dog bridges, which, as you know, are not being looked at by now. All right, and then just briefly, uh, Williams Road, we're overlaying now. Supervisor Williams, they're trying to pave today, they got a good bit done last week. Uh, Sturgis Maven Road, the overlay and servicing is simply complete, uh, we're getting ready to strike. Douglas Town, we called a temporary hold on that to get the culvert addressed in there before the paving crew come in. Crawford Road Bridge is underway, uh, the Sturgis West Point Bridge is underway, the decks actually own it. Uh, you may have seen an email I sent on Morgantown, I don't have an official response from that. If I don't get that in the next day or two, there's gonna be a second email. Uh, I had asked it one time, you may have done this, I need permission to advertise Mohai Crawford Road, intended on a state aid plan. And they are very, very close to being.
Motion for approval to advertise for Mohai.
Okay, good.
Motion, motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Trainer, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
I'll just leave, this is District Two, if you'd asked me now if that's that last, I have to put together on that. You may want to bring that up.
I wanna add, I wanna amend and add a couple of others to it too also. Uh, one of them is Sand Creek Road West, uh, Camps Airport Road, uh, Ballard Lane, and Paradise Lane.
Williams Airport, Ballard, we had done an estimate on Ballard, Paradise, I don't think we have looked at.
Like Sand Creek, Sand Creek Road West.
Sand Creek West, I've not looked at that, so I'll get it on supplement, bring those two.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion that we advertise for bid on the following roads here, uh, Rock Hill Road East, Rock Hill Road West, Rice Road, Bethesda Road, Willie Road, Jordan Lane, and Clifford Lane.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer that we advertise for bids on.
Are these state aid roads?
No, these are county roads.
This, this is, this is, I'm, I'm assuming your four-year road plan.
No, no, this, this is bond money.
Okay.
Can you say those words?
You wanna go ahead and add these?
Yeah, I wanna add those two also. Okay, uh, Rock Hill Road East, Rock Hill Road West, Rice Road, Bethesda Road, Willie Road, Jordan Lane, Clifford Lane, Camps Airport Road, Ballard Lane, Paradise Lane, and Sand Creek Road.
Can we get a copy of that?
He's already got it, but I already sent it.
With those additions?
I don't wanna have you.
About far to be able to accommodate the project.
We can add, he has. Just depending on what the bids come at, you will know what the bonds are going to be.
Uh, I second, I second that, to advertise, to receive bids on those roads. Any other questions? Any other, uh, uh, discussion? If not, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Were there estimates on that sheet, Clyde?
There's estimates on this sheet, I do not have estimates, I've got estimates on two of the four you added this morning.
All right, you gonna provide us a copy of that?
Yes, sir.
And if. Before you let Clyde get away, there's an item on my report that you had asked that we address. Um, regarding the need to authorize the acceptance of state aid project SAP 53A, which was Longview Road. If you'll, if you wanna talk to that, that's your time, I'm gonna bring it up during my report.
This, this is, again, this is just authorizing the final acceptance of that job, this didn't finish for quite some time, but it does have some retainage and payment due to the contractor that won't be issued until this is accepted.
Um, and I, and we, we've gone out there, but we had some problems out there, you know, on that Longview Road, me and, uh, we went out there, Victor, um, and, and looked at doing stuff, but the contractor didn't come back, that was some stuff that Victor did. But I think there's still some, um, areas out there that need attention on, on the culverts and stuff that were dropped.
We had had a filing inspection some months ago, I can give you the date, where we shortlisted the work for the contractor to finish, and he did come back and finish those items.
This is not gonna affect the other situation that we have?
Not at all.
So, so the, the list of deficiencies that was identified has been corrected, is that what you?
The prior list that was done months and months ago, I can get you the date of that inspection, we met with state aid, met with the county out there, and those deficiencies. The prior list that was done months and months ago, I can get you the date of that inspection. We met with state aid, met with the county out there, and those deficiencies were.
Victor, has that drainage and stuff out there been, you know, corrected where those, um, culverts were put in too low and all out there?
Yeah, but that wasn't, that wasn't on the, uh, on that list that Clyde had. Yeah, that wasn't on the list that Clyde, that they worked on.
Is that, the, the side of the road or is it culverts underneath our road?
No, it's the culverts on the, under ditches. There's some drainage issues with them.
I don't have anything to do with them.
Phillips.
Well, uh, that was where Phillips had taken them out and they didn't get put back in correctly. They were put in different places. Is that not what the, what the Landauer told us?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Alright. It's, it's built according to the plan.
So, so, so this will release any remaining contingency funds?
No, there's some remaining payment due to the contractor. And when I say contractor, I mean the general contractor being Phillips and the others that's not been paid, pending, y'all said that you're, that's state aid standard except, except for.
I'm saying that, that'll wipe, that'll, that'll.
Clean it up.
Okay.
About a fifteen year problem, but at all.
Or longer?
Oh, one.
And so all that, all that stuff has been addressed and taken care of?
The deficiencies that we noted in the parts list at the time we were completing the job have been addressed. Alright, so. Anything else for me?
Sort of.
Need a motion though.
Second. You said.
If, if everything has been done, it's supposed to have been done by, by Phillips. Um, yes, I just knew that there was a lot of problems out there that Landauer had that had been handled on that job that had not been taken care of.
There, there's also some problems that weren't created by, by the.
We got a motion by Supervisor Trainor and a second by Supervisor Williams that we release remaining contingency funds for the Longview, uh, project.
Yeah, but.
Given the SAP knowledge.
SAP fifty-three A. Longview Road.
Yes, that's why we're doing a lot of. What, a word is not, we're listing the funds, accepting that that is complete.
We're accepting the project as complete.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Alright. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trainor.
Anything else for me?
Uh, yeah. When, when have you heard anything from the, uh, slurry seal overlay for county?
Yeah, the base repair and some leveling is done. They requested an upgrade to the slurry. There's different, some are thin, some are thicker, some of this, some of that, but they request an upgrade to the actual seal coat that they're gonna put on. At no additional cost to the county. We ran that through state aid and made sure they didn't have an issue with it. That's been approved. So, weather permitted, and they should come in anytime on that with an upgrade.
We have, we have a company in contract now to do a slurry seal.
We've just got one, we've got Vance Construction under contract on the county road. That's the only one we have. And that's under a state aid project. And the review, just.
On, on Vance Construction, is there any way we could do a, a, a contract with them? So, there was other roads identified that we would already have them?
It's gonna need to be done pretty quick, if you want, because it ain't gonna take them long, they're gonna be gone.
Well, I know that.
The reason they requested the upgrade is because they got X material in a tank and they didn't, you know, it's available, they didn't want to flush that out, put the different material in, da, 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 da. So it was convenient for them and it was a upgrade. But if you've got other work you want done, I need it identified like in the next day or two.
I talked to you about it.
Okay.
I control, I control wanting to know the repairs, I mean, the, the finishing up on Longview, is that work done? Was it done in this FY or? I think you need that.
I don't go and say.
The acceptance, the acceptance of that road was approved in, uh, the first meeting in October. And I reviewed the video, and yes, there was a motion made. All the things were voted on, but it was not included in the minutes nor was a board order prepared on that road. So, we had to bring this back up because we have to spread it on to the minutes. So just to make y'all aware of that scenario.
And marbles with all that slip on.
Did, did, did you?
So that, those repairs have been done prior to that so far?
Correct.
Yes.
Alright, anything else for me? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for opening bid, uh, was that, uh, cut road bridge. You get that day. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, y'all. Hey, you won't send my presentation in there? I could have failed to get it to Wayne, cause I used, uh, Mr. Carter, dude, cause I used to bring it myself. So, I'll pass these out in the future. I'll have it in the package, okay? Some on that side. And then, uh, a second page I'm gonna pass out is a summary. Y'all are asking for a summary to be put in the package or an issue I may have? So I'm passing this as if this is gonna be okay for the summary. It really just says that you're, uh, here's the more. Like I said, those will be given to Mr. Carter and be in your presentation package. Next time. Um, is that, um, what you wanna see? If I don't have any issues? Okay. Uh, and we'll go over my package. It's about the same general information, my interviews, calls and claims and appeals and actions, uh, you can see how many. And then we had, um, the outreach activities and other VA information of basically the same thing that I've been doing, National Association, I meet with them. The Zoom meetings and then the, uh, Greater Triangle would do that, uh, monthly. And I'm in a new one now with the, uh, the NA, uh, the one you have, uh, Supervisor Trainor, the, and I'm meeting on the Zoom meeting with that. That's the, uh, uh, that's a National Association of, uh, Calis. That Mr. Matthews, uh, 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 is, um, chairman of. And you can see the upcoming events that we had. In fact, we've already had the, uh, senior picnic. That was last Friday, and that went well. And there's several more things. I'm gonna be working with the Veterans Resource Fair, and, uh, at all of these, I have a table set up with veterans, um, information brochures that I hand out and with the other VSO she joins me sometimes. And if you look on the announcements, uh, the shooter, Jackson Lee, um, has, uh, is sponsoring this bipartisan bill that would allow combat veterans that are retired military to keep both their military retirement and their VA compensation. I'm gonna keep a really good eye on that. I think that's unfair. I mean, the women saying that the VA has, so they're really gonna push this. And that's about short and sweet of it.
Any questions?
We certainly appreciate the service, Adam.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Motion to acknowledge the report. So, motion by Supervisor Trainor, second by Supervisor Williams. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have, uh, juvenile court Judge Leanne Turner. Good morning.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Good. How are you?
Good. Thank y'all for, um, letting us come. Um, Ms. Jackson is here too, um, for the recording of this. Um, I was not able to attend the last meeting of her, um, travel issues. I apologize for that. Um, but I believe y'all have been provided kind of with a summary of the budget amendment request. And just to kind of give you a little bit of background, um, this is a presentation that, um, another judge and I made to the, um, commission, um, on the future of Northeast and Mississippi, um, in the fall. And it was about a different aspect, but this just kind of helps educate, um, people about these courts and what we do. You can see at the bottom of the first page, all the different types of cases we have to hear. Um, and then if you look at page, I believe it's page five. Yeah, it's about, at page five, um, the personnel that's required. This is just one type of hearing that we hold. Um, this is the abuse and neglect and exploitation cases when a, um, child has been taken into the custody of the state, um, into CPS custody. When we hold their hearings, which the legislature tells us who has to be appointed counsel and how frequently we have to hold their hearings. Um, you'll see the bottom picture, the dollar signs are the people that the county budget, the juvenile court budget is responsible for paying for. Um, and you'll notice the prosecutor, the guardian of light, um, the attorney for the child, the attorney for the mom, and the attorney for the dad. Um, all of those are positions that are, um, attorneys and, um, that we have to, to pay, um, as, as the county. Um, right now, um, you know, and this is certainly something that, um, is kind of a traditional element of hiring attorneys, um, or appointing them to represent people in youth court or in the circuit court or in the chancery court. Um, most of the time, we're hiring attorneys who are in private practice and the obligation that they appear three or four or five times a month in front of us for court cases. Um, we can't really pay them their rate. We can't pay them their hourly going rate for private practice stuff. And so one of the main benefits that, um, the county or a court can provide, um, to these private attorneys is the ability to have health insurance and to participate in the state retirement system. Um, and so what we're asking at this point, we, um, currently, what we had, um, five independent contractor attorneys and three employment attorneys. And in my budget, um, line five fifty is contractual services for legal fees. And then in my employment line, um, above that, four or five, um, we had some positions for attorneys too. So this is all money that's there. It's a, a zero, um, cost. Um, it's not any type of increase. And in fact, the proposal I'm making would spend three thousand dollars less of the county, um, juvenile court budget. But we're proposing that one of the independent contractor attorney position that was recently vacated, um, not be replaced, but to have the other two independent contractor attorney positions, um, that are interested in, um, having the benefits and, um, of, of being an employee, um, to have those two positions converted to employee positions. Um, basically, it's, um, allows to retain them, um, you know, retain them very little as independent contractors. In addition to the fact that, of course, they're paying, um, for their social security and all that out there in taxes. Um, but it, it would lead to, um, longevity. Um, yeah, that's the main reason attorneys look for these positions. In addition to wanting to do good, because they are representing children, they are representing the families, so that is a benefit to the county. Um, but we're asking to be allowed to, um, convert two positions to employee, um, positions to allow them to have benefits, to allow, um, for retention. Um, the only people I can, um, appoint for these roles are attorneys. And so we obviously, you know, it's not an unlimited supply of those positions. Um, the two employees that we have right now, um, that were, want to remain contractor attorneys have these benefits from other sources already. Um, so, you know, that's, you know, this is just an additional position for them, so they don't need the, the retirement or the health insurance benefits for that.
Judge, was there, there was a, there was an actual decrease in the amount?
Of compensation.
Of compensation?
Yes.
But on the flip side of that, on the per side of it, with the balancing out would be that on per's and on the self insured side, we would have to cover on that side, correct?
Correct. Do you all still have this? Is this in your packet? Okay. Um, so that just shows that the net cost to the county for each position. Um, but when reducing the one independent contractor that, you know, that they've already, um, left, um, that would, there's no additional cost to the county from that.
When we add a person, this is a question, not a statement. I'm trying to figure this out. When we add a person to our insurance, self insured side, is there a, do we have any idea of what the, the potential impact to the budget would that be? I know our money people are, understand that far better than I do.
I'm sorry.
The, when you add someone to the, the insurance side of, of a self insured, do we have an estimated amount for every add?
Well, we, the actual cost of the insurance, the occurred claims cost, we have no idea of how, how little or how high those cost.
So it could be, it could be a net positive or it could be a net negative, correct?
Correct. And on there, if you put some in on the insurance, wouldn't that open it up to them adding their family to that insurance?
Mm-hmm. With them paying the premium?
Um, you don't have to say, but I, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is if we are self insured, each employee is not just the health insurance payment. It, it's a lot of money that we pay out. Like if, you know, somebody, you know, is hurt, you got, I mean, the county pays that. It wouldn't just be the cost of the insurance. You know, if somebody, you know, goes out on leave, you know, then we have to, you know, pay that. There's a lot of other costs that go in there with it.
On leave, are you referring to the type of their compensation or that?
Well, I mean, you have to have, you know, because if you're a county employee, you're approved leave, your course of time off.
They do not under the court appointment system. They don't have that benefit of unpaid leave. And it's a, it's a, at, at the will and the pleasure of the court type appointment order. It's not like forever. It's not permanent. It's, and there's no, they don't maintain, but they don't have the same type of long term benefits. I, I understand what you're saying, and yeah, add people to the, the, um, insurance, that's, that's one of the main reasons people will take this job is for that benefit.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that's, we don't know what that would be to be able to budget for that. I mean, especially when they're a contract person. I just can't get my mind to wrap around to where, I see it as an advantage to you, to recruiting for that, but, you know, we're here for the county.
Sure.
And so we're trying to figure out what, what kind of financial constraint.
Absolutely.
That would be on the county.
Absolutely.
I see where it would be, you know, net net, but on the other end.
Sure.
You know, that kind of makes me nervous with somebody that does not work full time for the county, but you get full time, you know, benefits.
Sure.
You know, there, I.
Yeah, and, and.
I just feel like they're, I mean, what, what kind of legal can of worms is that?
Yes, I mean, in all honesty, it's no, in terms of the, the legal side of it, it's, you're, anytime you hire someone and they're on this, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a lift on, on covering that.
Sure.
On the flip side of it, the real question we gotta ask ourselves in some of this is where where are our obligations in terms of whether, how to make the court operate?
Right.
And also on the flip side of it, how do we cover that cost at the best? And I mean, and I don't mind trying to push that out and try to get some numbers out for you guys, I'm not, but the, the main issue is gonna be, you know, how do we, how do we deal with this? And, and you don't have a, a pretty slim population to, to pull from. But on the flip side of it, not everybody needs insurance. I mean, there, there, there is that, that reality that we have out there.
Sure. And, and the bottom line is, I cannot hold court without these people.
Can, can we, is this a possibility that we can get this tabled until, what's the, what's the next meeting? Two weeks?
Well, well, I mean, there should be a lot of historical data on this, you know, since prior to two thousand. I was an attorney appointed, um, to represent, um, people and then to do the hearings for the commitments.
It is for youth.
And so this is, you know, chancery court, all of our, um, circuit court, public defenders, that's the whole system. Um, before y'all were here, before I was here, um, the county had already agreed that the youth court would be appointing additional prosecutors and not using the county prosecutor. I mean, this is something that's been in place for forever. I mean, this is something that's been in place for forever, you know, this is just me.
And the prosecutor said that they cannot take on the youth court, I talked to.
That was well before me, I had nothing to do with that.
Judge, why, why do we, so essentially, we've got two, two methods of, of employment, right? And we've got the contract workers, and then we have the employees who have an odd arrangement where, where they, they're, they're paid a set salary, we don't monitor their hours, we don't provide any equipment, well, other than the court dates and that kind of thing. We don't provide any equipment or space. So, they, they behave a lot like a common law contract worker would, would behave.
Exactly.
I guess my question is, why do we have the two types? If one is more beneficial than the other, why don't we land on one and that's what we use? Can you voice that a little bit for me?
Sure, sure. The, this, I believe that part of this is that we're a new court. Part of it is that the budget for the youth court was set prior to there being a full-time judge. And then for the last two years, the court clerk has been over the budget. So, it, um, it's, I'll just say, it's never been right. The main reason for contract attorneys would be for occasions where there's a conflict with every employee attorney and we hire somebody for a specific case. We don't have any attorneys like that right now. They're all appointed to multiple cases, they're on a rotating basis, they're regularly in our courts. But the, the original, you know, idea or the, the need for contractor attorneys would just be for some special appointment when there's a conflict. That's, that's the outlier.
But we're not implying it that way now, but it's on the contracts.
No, it's kind of upside down. Yeah, it's kind of upside down, and I'm asking to be able to correct that.
And part of that is because certain, it is so much expense involved in this, and some of, some of the attorneys out there already have insurance, already have.
Absolutely.
And, and it saves the county money not to have to cover those aspects.
Exactly, exactly. The ones we have, in addition to the ones that would be appointments, would be ones that just don't need it.
But, but unfortunately, the flip side of that is also true, whenever you have a, someone that we have to cover the insurance, we have to cover the per's, it adds additional money to that side of it. I don't know what the answer to this is, y'all, but this is just complicated.
So, if I could, one, one final thought, if you confirm that I'm thinking about this correctly. So, so you currently have, if I'm counting correctly, you have eight positions total.
Yes.
Five of those positions are contract attorney positions, and three of those are employee attorney positions.
Correct.
All right? Currently, you have three con, three contract attorney positions vacant.
One vacant.
One, one is vacant.
Yes, the other two.
But the two you're wanting to convert, right?
Yes, yes.
All right, so one vacant, so you're gonna eliminate that vacancy altogether?
Yes, and that position's gone.
You're gonna transfer the two existing ones on as an employee attorney?
Correct.
And, and the, the gains associated with eliminating the one vacant position are going to be what you would use to cover the increase in cost of having, of those two attorneys becoming employees as opposed to contract attorneys?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, so my description of it and understanding is, is accurate?
Yes.
So, we've got, we've got to operate the youth court. My, my concern was, were we doing this with one-time money? And I was, I think I was satisfied that this is not one-time money, this is built-in budget money.
It is correct, sir, it's not any additional, it's just moving funds.
So, that's not grant money?
This is money that y'all budgeted for me to hire attorneys contractually, three that I've been using, that I'm asking to pull down to two attorneys, but to convert them up to employees for longevity and retention. Our families benefit so much, not, not that we have a choice, but the cases where we have the attorney's representation, that's the key to reuniting our families, or not.
Supervisor, I apologize, I may have misstated the budgetary money that originally on the grant side of it, so I, I did one more.
There are no grants funds in what I'm referring to today. It's money y'all budgeted to allow me to hire attorneys and just doing one less and asking to convert to employees.
No, no additional expense.
No, sir, and in fact, it's.
So, it's just a free, it's benefits that go on by the current.
Now, the fact that you had eight total, whether it be contract or employee, and you're now moving to seven total, what impact is that gonna have on, on your ability to maintain your caseload?
Right now, it looks like it'll be fine. One, we just added in December, anticipating we might have to support the one contractor leave, and so, that's part of, you know, where we have, I think we're fine, we're at a homeostasis now. I believe we have enough attorneys for the caseload with the seven as opposed to the eight.
And are there other counties that do that too?
They all do it, that's, they all do it this way, yes, ma'am.
They all, they all furnish the insurance and everything?
We are one of the rare counties that don't, and in fact, I know Mr. Robertson has had some complaints from attorneys that, that we, that it wasn't something I could offer them for the last couple of years.
Do you think we'll be adding additional attorneys, or you think there's gonna be enough attorneys to be able to handle the caseload?
For the foreseeable future, I believe seven is very, it's a good, it's a good balance.
A good balance.
Yes, sir. We've had seven before, then I added the, the one left, so that we're, we're kind of right back where we have been the last year or so. So, I believe, assuming we don't have any type of just unprecedented spike in cases of children coming into custody, that we should be fine.
Are you very, are you very comfortable with the current mix? In other words, this will be five and two? So, this mix, you think, is, is gonna, because you were wanting?
Yes.
You were wanting the capability to contract attorneys?
Absolutely.
And so, this mix is gonna be useful for you?
Yes, that's, yes. The two who right now would remain contract attorneys have this, these benefits from another source that was their original source. They don't want it, don't need it. It would, it would be a useless waste of money to provide them with insurance, it's a double insurance.
The only, the only unknown is, is, is what possible insurance costs, but, but I mean, we assume that risk with any employee that we hire, so.
Yes, sir.
If there's not any other questions?
I'd like to make the motion of approval quick.
Motion by supervisor, frame of second by supervisor Williams, any further discussion? All in favor?
Huh.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much, we really appreciate it. Y'all are so supportive of this court, and I want to come use of that.
Thank you for what you all do, I know, you know, dealing with, with, with children and youth, you know, it's, it's hard, and some sad stories are involved in that, but we certainly appreciate it.
But we, we have lots of programs.
We need you.
We're, we're still working on getting additional programs. We now have a facility dog that can be in court with our children, who've been abused and neglected, and y'all should do a little therapy with them. And so, that's at no cost to the county, Mississippi State has provided that to us. And so, we are just continuing to grow and expand, and I would love at some point to just talk to you about what we're doing, whenever y'all have a, have some time, but it's not with everybody else waiting. But, all right, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, we've got information technology, Mr. Carr, is it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's been pretty quiet. It won't be quiet for a person.
All right.
One of the differences between private practice and public is that a lot of the technology in private practice is used to generate money, and when we're talking about public policy, government, we're talking about fiscal responsibility and compliance. So, one of the things that we've been waiting on, that will happen on April the tenth this week, is we have homeland security coming in to do a baseline assessment of the county's core network facilities. We've essentially left that alone until that assessment is done. And once that assessment comes, I expect that there will be a large number of deficiencies that we will be asked to correct. So, just a heads up, you'll probably see a lot of me every month from here on out as we move forward and bring projects to the board's attention. Today, we're kickstarting this by asking for something that's been in place for about twelve years through the state I T S division, but it's never been put into use yet. And that is a dot gov branding for Octavia County. So, right now, we're a dot org, some counties are dot coms. It should be a dot gov to represent government status. Some of the benefits that come with that, it's managed and maintained by I T S, down in Jackson. It also comes with the ability to prevent things like denial of service, where you're bombarded and your services go down in the county. The state manages that for free. There's a, there's a lot of other benefits, it's a fairly new thing, been out there for a long time, but it's only been really pushed for about the last year to two years. So, we'll be one of the first counties in the state of Mississippi that will adopt it. We were lucky, our name is actually on the books and in play right now, it's just not in use. So, we are technically Octavia County dot M S dot gov. And so, I'd like permission to be able to act on your behalf and work with I T S to basically become the agent in charge, I think it's in the packet, there's a wording and a letter where the board president would authorize me to act on your behalf with representatives from I T S, and we can actually start to, I'm gonna call it rebranding, we'll use that loosely right now, but basically, turn our image into an official Octavia County dot M S dot gov. So, email addresses, it's the beginning of everyone having an official Octavia County government identity.
Make the motion, you.
My motion.
Second.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Trina, any other discussion?
That give us some benefits, some government-type benefits that we're not presently receiving yet.
There is some interesting things, I mean, there's obviously benefits to the, to the county in terms of security, compliance, how we're viewed. There's also a twenty percent discount that government employees can get when they go out and buy things on different sites, I mean, there's some fringe benefits to this as well, but it's, it's really just putting your stuff out there and saying, look, we're a government agency and this is who we are.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
I don't have anything for today, Chief Johnson, Deputy Chief Johnson's got some messages coming up behind me. But I think the only thing I didn't mention is, we have a big project, three sixty-five labs, the sheriff's working on, hot and heavy, and we're making a big push to try to get them into training the first week in March, so that's a, I like a one on there.
First week in March of next year?
Of this year.
Sorry, sorry.
It's May, first, okay. Okay.
Oh, is this, is this the actual contract?
No, I've got it.
Okay.
That's just a copy of the I T S policy. What we're needing is for you to sign a letter authorizing Carl to represent the county in dealing with I T S to secure those, those domains. And so, I've got this for you, and we'll sign all of this. Chief Johnson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, first thing I have is, we're asking for authorization for a deputy to enter into a contract with the Missouri Bill Narcotics violent crime task force. We already have one person on it, we're removing that person and replacing with another deputy. Pretty much, it would just allow us to operate in the discounter in the surrounding area once we have a violent crime, or if we need assistance from other agencies to bring them in also. There won't be no cost to the county.
He's talking about item number two in your packet?
Right.
Is it number one or number?
Number two. Yeah, that's, yeah, number two.
Which we've been, we've asked at different times, it's not even.
Need a motion? Motion by supervisor Trina, second by supervisor Little, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
All right, second is gonna be the request for authorization to enter into an agreement to secure the solution for cloud storage for the cameras that we have. It's gonna be seventy dollars per camera, we currently have fourteen cameras running in the county that we need storage for. It's gonna be a part of the budget quest for twenty twenty-five, and let you all know when the cameras are all ready-made, a pretty much significant helping, a drive-by shooting that we have here.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Trina, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
You didn't discuss fourteen?
Yes.
At seventy dollars, that's all it.
Yes, pretty much the app for the Octavia County Sheriff Department, we are, it's gonna be a support of three sixty-five, it's gonna be an app in which it will be a great assistance to the sheriff department as well as the public, if they're gonna allow visitation, where family members don't have to come to the jail, they can do it from home on a cell phone, it'll be video recorded, and we'll have access to that, tips and other things that will be beneficial to the unit as well as the sheriff department. The cost is gonna be forty thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, we are requesting that to come out of the D F A money that we have in support of three sixty-five.
And when he says D F A money, let's make sure y'all understand, that's the five hundred thousand dollars that was appropriated to us under special appropriation?
For that actual project?
For the three sixty-five project, as a big part of that three sixty-five project, yes.
We did have an amendment that we're working on, make sure.
Yes, the cost's gonna be nine thousand per year, for year two, three, and four, that could be paid out of commissary. They looked over the contract, and there's gonna be some amendments by Attorney Robertson to be made, the company's already agreed that whatever changes he made, pretty much will be fine with him.
Okay. So, you, you were able to confirm that we can use those commissaries?
Yes, I have a, yes, justification for the use of commissary funds to purchase a mobile app for the sheriff's office if this is the one.
And what he's talking about is, we, thank you, what he's talking about is, we have a special fund, and Dee, tell me if I mess this up, we have a special fund that, that can only be spent for inmate support. And since this app primarily does that, and, and the, the funds that reside there are from the sales and the commissary and other, other sources, is that accurate? And so, this will, the, the future funding for this project will not come out of the general fund or the sheriff's normal budget. It, it will sustain itself through increases, hopefully, in the commissary.
Could pay, pay ourselves back on some of the, I say back, do some of that D F A wash?
Maybe.
Or it'd be nice.
You're talking about from the commissary?
Right.
Well, they, I wouldn't, it's not that much.
I'm, I'm saying you're selling a lot of cash. Right, right now, right now, we have one. Right now, we have enough money in those.
Yes.
So, so, this app, how would it work? Would, would you take the inmate to a special location and, and interact with family members?
Company agents, it has, Loudoun County has it, I've had it since I was working with the district attorney's office, pretty much, it has sheriff's welcome, compliments and complaints, it will feature fugitive, attached division, jail information, resource map, ways to join our team, set offender registry, our community calendar, you know how Saturday mornings, people could come up to the jail and visit with their family and friends, and this way, they'll be able to do it via video, and they won't have to come up. Not pretty much, you know, somebody wants to see their kids and things like that, they'll be able to do it from the comfort of their home, of course, all this is, you know, cost to, to the people that are calling in, just like right now with the phone calls and things like that.
Just like phone call, then, okay.
Right, so it'd just be convenient for people to interact with their family members rather than having to come up to the jail and things like that. It allows us to receive tips and people to communicate with the sheriff department, you know, via the app versus having to come up on a lot of things.
Need, uh, need a motion to, for the?
Number one. I think it's good thing, number one. My only question was that, would a person have to be incarcerated, have a relative incarcerated, to be able to use the app, or whether anyone could use the app?
Anyone can use the app, like, right now, I can pull up every inmate in Loudoun County jail, picture, charges, and things like that, it's updated on a daily basis, so you'll be able to know who's in jail at all times. Cause right now people have to call and ask if it's, versus they're locked up or not, versus the app.
Can I, can we amend this a little bit to say that, that this is approved based on the amendments that we're going to make so that we don't have to come back?
Right.
Cause I'm, I'm putting in there where they're covering some stuff that, that they don't like to recover. It's a good, it's a good program, I'm not trying to say that like that.
Some issue came uh, last, last week, it was a, you know, contractual obligations and I think.
Well, there's some warranties that are not included in the contract that I want to get added. So with those amendments, you know, we'd like your approval to enter into the, enter into this.
It's a move. Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Traynor, uh, any further discussions? I guess, are y'all still having periodically training with this, with this three sixty-five that you're in and acting?
Yes, sir, and what uh, Carl was talking about, they're really about to actually get ready to kick it off. So Traynor's about to pick up with all the employees at the sheriff department, so we're gonna know how to operate it. We pull the speed ahead, hope?
Sound good. I know there was some equipment that, that was going into the, the vehicles, uh, is all of that?
The equipment has not been placed in yet, uh, I think the computers, I think Carl got a bunch of computers up there to train on before they have been put in the vehicles. And I think I got one other thing, this is.
Let me carry that one finish. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
And that is just permission to apply for the twenty twenty-six homeland security grant.
Motion by supervisor Traynor, second by supervisor Little, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Chief. And next we've got uh, road manager's report, Mr. Cal.
Good morning. Good morning. All right, we're gonna be brief. Uh, we've got the road manager report. If there's any questions about that? If not, uh.
Motion with who's road manager? Motion by supervisor Traynor, second by supervisor Williams, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
All right, uh, next thing we have, uh, we have a quote, a two quote for driveway replacement. And that's where we're replacing the con- concrete over driveways that was cut and the covered replaced. Uh, we have two quotes, uh, I think it's six driveways. Uh, our lowest bid came in at around uh, fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Motion approval on your friendly craftsman.
Hey, and I was, I was gonna ask, that's all on here where the second bid was from Trickle Off, do we not have any contract people around here we can get local bids from?
Uh, we, we may, we may. Uh.
I'm just saying, you know. While we're talking about local, huge local, so I was just wondering.
Your, your friendly craftsman is the cheapest bid.
That's just, that's the name, I think we had this before, but I, that is the name of this business.
Yeah, your friend.
Okay, making sure.
And we, we have been doing business with this gentleman, he's done a lot of our uh, driveways. This, what, what caused us to have to get quotes this time is we had a number of driveways taking place at one time. And so in order to avoid a split purchase, it exceeded the, the threshold that required a quote. And so that's what caused us to have to have to get a quote this time.
He's been doing a good job.
All right, uh.
Motion.
Motion. Your friendly craftsman, lowest bid.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Traynor, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Also, we have two quotes on the resurfacing of Octopole over the bridge that the county made repairs to back here. Uh, we feel like that it has settled and we had two contractors we went out with. And uh, in detail showed them what we was looking for. And Mississippi paving came back as our lowest bid. Uh, we also had a bid from Falcon Contract.
Motion approval on your payment uh, construction. Mississippi. Mississippi payment and construction. Motion by supervisor Williams that we authorized Mississippi paving construction to make repairs on bridges replaced, around bridges replaced on all the tops. Uh, second, second by supervisor Traynor.
I have a question about this, um, just because like on Falcon, Falcon described like, you know, um, you know, the, you know, they were gonna do the limestone, but you know, all, you know, kind of detailed out what they were gonna do on, on it, but on this one, um.
Well, they, he just.
Mississippi paving, it just says, you know, resurfacing of the bridge.
Yeah.
They didn't put any specifications like, you know, how much they were gonna do, you know, two inches of asphalt.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't say what they were gonna do to resurface it, I guess what I'm trying to say, that same amount of money.
Yeah, both of them, we described, both of them looked at what we wanted. And that was go in, remove four inches of the crushing run when it was there, bring it out to the side, put base in, and go over it with two inches of asphalt over the whole entire job.
I was just, I was just asking, cause Falcon described what they were gonna do, this one just said they were gonna redo it, so I didn't know if that gave them, you know, latitude to do an inch of, you know, asphalt.
Yeah, they, they both bided on what, on what we showed them. And that was to the length of the overlay and the taking out the ma- uh, material to put in a base surface and to do a two-inch overlay. Uh, he just chose not to describe it in his bid.
Will, will you, would you be monitoring, making sure that it's done?
Yes.
Only note that I have is let's get it done as quick as we possibly can.
Yeah.
Let's try not to shift that bridge down for a bit, oh, we do.
No, they, they gonna do it on a, they gonna do it and maintain traffic.
And, and we, yeah, we want to get it done, but, but I, I do see supervisor Little, uh, they, they, you know, in the future, at least have them to detail our.
Apes. Yeah, apes, the apes.
I think we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
All right, uh, I think we have uh, one covered request. Uh, this, uh, and what this is about, they already, it's a home already there. The driveway they using now actually, when surveyed, fell across on someone else's property. So they in turn needing a driveway put in that will be on their property.
You have that as a Sheila Lane twenty twenty Bethel Road.
And the person's name is Sheila Lane?
Yeah, twenty twenty Bethel Road. Sheila Lane.
Motion. Motion by supervisor.
Did we go in the original folder where they marked it or what?
No, 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 this cover has been here, this, this address has been there for years and years. But when the property was surveyed, the cover that they were using fell on the other person's property and they want one on theirs.
This is, her, the person's name is Sheila.
Lane.
Lane, with a G, okay.
No, no, Lane.
Okay, not, not.
Not Lane.
Motion by supervisor Traynor, second by supervisor Little, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
All right, one other thing and then I'll, I'll.
While, while we're on cover, I got a couple of questions for uh, seven six six one Maven Bell.
Second.
Been moved by supervisor How, second by supervisor Traynor, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
And that's seven six six one?
Seven six six one, Maven.
Is there any other? All right, uh, one other thing, uh, I was visited uh, by a gentleman, uh, I can't give you his name, I think it's, they detailed, they gave you the package. Uh, and what uh, what in, what we talked about, they are licensed for, to receive tires. And what he talked about, and I know we were going through, is uh, that we can set up a program to receive tires. We can charge the allotted amount, and that I think is around on a car tires, about dollar a tire. We can actually set up our own tire receiving station if this board see fit and force to do so. We can receive these tires, take payments for them, and then we will be able to bring these tires to that site. They will in turn take them. I think the only thing that we'll have to have is our own trailer that we'll have to put the tires in. Uh, and it's just uh, it's just something that I'm bringing before the board for you all to think about and see if there's a need and if we wanna pursue this.
I like to make a motion, because if you don't, then what happens is I'm picking them all up on the west corner. They know somebody's picking them up and they throwing them out and I just pick them up and take them to the landfill. So you need something probably on this, you can, because uh, if not, they gonna throw them in the creeks, everywhere else.
And also, and he also, the reason for him coming is because he in, uh, said that the laws wasn't very strict on it because it wasn't just a real hard, harsh reason to enforce it. But with the population in Octavio County picking up, people are starting to notice this and complaining about it. So he said, once this program is off and running, or once they get everything in full fledged, there could be times where it may be, we, you know, it's, being able to find us could be in the next step for not actually keeping our tires clean.
I, I agree, we need something, but uh, I don't guess I'm quite clear yet on, on this tire disposal program. Now, I'll, explain to me again how this works.
Well, what we would have to do is, we would have to as a county. And, and like I'm saying, this is just up, I'm bringing this to the board like was brought to me. We would have to provide a tire disposal center.
Somebody, where they able to.
Where they can bring, they actually bring the tires, they pay to dispose of them, and then we take them in.
We charge them a dollar per tire.
We charge them a dollar per tire for, I think it's for, and I'd have to get back with him to get to all the rates, I don't know if bigger tires or more, or if all tires are the same. Once we take them in, we, we put, we put them in a trailer. And then once our trailer is full, we take them and dump them, and we pay them for bringing them there and they charging us. Basically what it is, we providing a service, it may not be any benefit to the county other than removing the tires from the roadway of the county.
And, and I, where were your trailers in? And, and if somebody show up with thirty tires.
Thirty tires. Then we just, we have to take those tires, put them into that trailer, and then, and then dispose of them. Then, when then we'll, every so often when that trailer is full, we'll take that trailer, carry it to the disposal site, we'll dump them and it's from their own.
And, and, and I guess you've thought through this, so your, your trailer will sit at central shop?
Yeah, we'd have to, more than likely have it at central shop, and we'll have to have someone taking in tires.
Is there somebody doing this somewhere that we might could, well, this visit and see how they.
What do the tire shops do, like when you take the tires off and, you know, they, they, they leave the tires there?
I'll tell you what's happening.
I mean, they gonna go take them by our dump site?
Well, I, I see.
With the term into the county?
I see somebody, especially out of my district, at least twice a month with, with uh, I bet you this fifty tires. There's been a couple of times over in Sun Creek that's loaded and we had, we've had to.
We've had to pick them up.
So, yeah, so the county, the county is having to go and pick them up. Uh, uh, I've called Captain Word a few times here, go pick up tires where they throwing them in, in the creek, you know, ten, twelve tires. So we do need this service. I'm, I'm just, uh, we, we'll need somebody there to monitor. I wouldn't want it sitting somewhere.
No, it, yeah.
And people just go and dump tires around.
No, 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 it, it needs to be where they coming in, they checked in, they'll have to sign off, we'll have to count the tires, they sign off, they pay us via check, pay over to Octavio County. And then we'll have, you know, it'll have to be a service that we'll have to provide and keep track of and, like I say, dump the tires in the trailer.
Rob, can you, can you help me with this, Rob?
Red Panther is, they are one of the.
Let me, let me ask, let me ask you this. Uh, can you help me with this, uh, or help the board with this? Is there any way we can communicate with the tire companies here in, in Starville? Uh, that, I don't know if you can legally provide them, let us know when somebody come and pick up a load of tires for disposal? Uh, that way we can sort of track when.
This would kind of go into, some of the things we've been talking about ordinances and things, I know that nobody wants to talk about that dirty word anymore, but the reality is, is that, that, I'll use Sturgis for the example here, there was a tire place in Sturgis that had tires piled up. We were getting complaints all the time, I was personally getting complaints. And one of the big issues with these tires, y'all, it's not just the fact that you have tires, but they hold water. When they hold water, they hold mosquitoes, when they hold mosquitoes, they hold, there's diseases that are, that are propagated out of that. One of the things that I'm concerned about, and I think this is where you're going, is that if we can get with these businesses, cause I, what will end up happening is we're less expensive than what they are currently paying for disposal. And, and as long as it's a wash for us, I don't, I'm not suggesting to you. Uh, yeah, I'm not suggesting in any way, shape or form, I think that, that supervisor Traynor is exactly right. I see uh, in aid of them being thrown out the, I've got some acreage out there, they're dumping them on my property too. So the reality is, I think this is a viable thing that we need to do, but getting with these other companies might be a positive thing. So I think what y'all could do is accept this, this idea in its, in the big future and then allow me and our road manager to get together and make certain that we, that we will have a wash.
We did have a, not cutting you off, Rob, we D Q did visit with us when we were in Jackson. So we can actually, and I'm not gonna say too much, but there's actually grants out there that we may be able to get, to get this program up and running. I just need to get back with the, one of the young ladies and get them to come in and you and I and them, or maybe bring them to the board. And, and try to get this program up and running. And it, it's a tire disposal fee that you have to pay when you leave a tire there, we would have to charge the same thing. It would be that, the only thing we're trying to do is, we're trying to give people that has tires that's all over the place, we giving them a location to bring those tires rather than dump them in Trim Cane Creek. They have a, you know, cause that's the first thing, you know, I, I, right now, it's, it's a location that my truck is supposed to pick up. They got debris out there and it's about thirty tires sitting out there too that we can't, we can't pick them up.
And to your point, we're, it's already our responsibility, once it ends up in the public right way, we end up being on the hook for it. So I think that this is a smart move in that direction.
My, my only thing, disposal made to burn.
No, 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 we won't burn them. No, they go to a cycle, at least.
That's why I was wondering.
They recycle, this, they'll go to a recycling, and Red Panther is one of those recycling sites.
How much does Red Panther charge us for the tire?
D Q wanna.
One more.
D Q wanna go, wanna go along.
Oh, absolutely.
How much does Red Panther charge us to accept the tire?
That's, that, we'll, I'll have to get all of that in coordinated. Actually, we got some at our shop now that we can, they told me that we can dispose of for free. But that's just because they are at the government location. It's a lot of uh, stuff that comes along with that, that benefits to us because we're government, that cuts down on our disposal fee. So once, the first thing I had wanted to do before I went running all over the place with this, is to make sure that the board was in agreement with it. Once I, now you all, uh, told me you're in agreement with it, now I can go and, and, and.
Work out details.
Work out details, and like I said, I want to get a young lady a call. Work out details, and like I said, I wanna get a young lady calling Jackson, and we get together and try to see if we can apply some grants. And I, I think we have gotten grants before, but they were issued through Mississippi State.
Right, we, we did, we got, we got some cleanup grants before.
And so, but I think that's, you know, if we're gonna.
I just know DQ would approve of us disposing of them that way.
Yeah, no, we can't, it won't be a, it'll, they'll have to be hauled to a disposal site. So what'll happen, one time a month or whenever the trailer get full, we'll have to unhook one of the trucks and hook to that trailer and carry it to that disposal site and dump them out.
Well, that's why I'm glad.
And the only thing that we'll have to do is we'll have to, we'll have to come up, you know, with the, it'll cost us to find a trailer.
I'm glad, even if it's a wash.
I'm glad you cleared that up, yeah.
Even if it's a wash, I think it'd be beneficial, rather than having to try to hurry up all these tires and, you know, uh, so.
Maybe I'm on some ideas, you guys don't pick up tires when you're out there?
Nah, I don't pick up tires.
Man, I didn't, I didn't go out on.
And what I do, I, I can take them down to the landfill and put them in the trailer.
Yeah, I will.
And, and, and you know, if I'm out, whatever, and I just pick them up, cause I, I hate to see, that, hate to see garbage, that's a whole nother story. But the bottom line of it is, is that I'm just in one, I'm not riding the whole county every day. So I can just imagine what it looks like in other places, you see. And so, uh, I mean, I, I think it's, man.
Well, that's a tire harvester in my area.
Well, now, but you're, you're reputable people who, who deal with tires. And you know, you guys are the biggest ones out in town, William Wells, R and M, you know, they, they charge the fee, and I'm sure they're properly disposing of them.
Well, what they, what they, what this, R and M tires, they hire this guy, come pick up, we got a load of tires. We're gonna pay you two bucks a tire to come haul off our old tires. Well, he come load up, load them up, and his disposal method is over in the creek.
But some of them, they, they wouldn't wanna be associated with him.
You know, that's, once they, once they, once they hire this person and pay him to dispose of the tires, they should require that, that this guy, uh, whomever, have some place license that they, but I think, that's not how, I.
That's not how it ends up.
That's not how it works.
We had a place in particular that was making these, well, there's at least two places, you know?
Oh, yeah, I got some places, I got a place that I'm, my territory, you know, that, that, the person who was doing that is, is, is glory and well, and uh, tires dealer.
But I think, I think if we can get something like this and actually get it catching on, I think it'll help.
Oh, yeah.
So we've got a motion and a second to enter into the question. Is this, are we entering into something, are we starting a discussion?
We're, we're allowing, what I've got here is allowing the two of us to put something together to bring back to y'all. Is that the original ways?
Yeah, that's, no, I think we just need to work on getting it together and get the right people, and then we can go from that.
Who was our second?
I think Supervisor Little, uh, Trainer Little. All in favor, motion passes you now.
Also, while, while I'm here, if there's anyone in the county that has a road that your constituent has contacted you about, that don't want it to be, I mean, well, not the road, in their area, around their address, that don't want the spraying, I need to add that to my spray list. What, where I, I have a spray list, I didn't bring it with me. Now, I just wanna note that on that spray list, so they can be looking for them when they turn on that road. So it, it don't have to be right now, just not today, but just, just give me a call so I can get it on that spray list and get that list updated to where we can have it, uh, ready. And they will, they actually supposed to start, start spraying this week if the weather permits.
And if, if possible, I'd like to, uh, make a note there on my website, and Mr. Carter, if you can, put that in, pay it too, that's public number, so. Whether it won't be any excuse.
They need to contact the road department and give the, the road department their address if they don't desire spraying to be done in that area.
I got some that still have the no spray signs up.
Okay, and I, I, I'm, I'm trying to get those as, when I'm going through. I'm trying to make a note of those so I can put those on there. I just need to, for them to don't have that uh, uh moment and forget it, you know? That's, that's why I wanna try to get that road name on there, when they turn on it, they'll know that this road is sprayable, but it's got no spraying signs on it. I got my list almost together. I hadn't got it in the form that I need to give it to you, just like I got my spray list. I just got a little bit more I need to do to it. And so I should have that ready for you, hopefully by the end of this week, and give each supervisor a copy so they can go over it. And uh, Supervisor Little, if you own Vickers Road, uh, we need to actually kinda do a little project on that one to, it, it's got some potholes and stuff, and I actually need to take the paving machine in there and do that.
I think I, I, I wrote that, I thought you, there's some, it's just separated all out.
If you wanna go ahead, the road, the bed, the base is in good shape, it's just the, the surface has detached, and we need to go back in there and level it and fix it. So we need to get that on, on, uh, on our list as one of the roads that we need to get together with.
Definitely, that's what I found.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I wrote it, and it's, it's, it's pretty rough, and we need to get it fixed.
I, I had, I was gonna, I was gonna send you my pictures, uh, today after the meeting, but you wrote it.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I took, I've been trying to, I've been out, I've looked at pretty well nearly all of them. I just got a few more that I gotta do, and then I'm gonna get my list together. It's a little bit, it takes a little while to get over this county, it's pretty big county. When you get out and riding it road by road, and that would not even be gravel, that's just the paving.
Uh, Mr. Carter, I, I do have something to call your attention to, and uh, to the board's attention to, and maybe to, uh, Turner Robinson, uh, too as well. There was an accident that occurred on Hill State Boulevard where a car came off Hill State Boulevard on two Polhaus Road and kept straight across and hit that person's house and ran into cars that was parked in the yard, and the person in the bed sleeping, the, the car hit her house also. So I guess what I'm asking, do we have any type of warning device? And, and maybe Mississippi State need to be involved with, with this particular concern with Hill State Boulevard, where those motor, motor vehicles will have some type of warning that there's a end of the road there. And um, so they will slow down, uh, you don't want, you don't want that end up in, in that person's yard or that person's house again. Now, the same thing used to happen on, um, on Mohair Road.
Mohair Road, RT's in the profit.
Mohair Tea's in the profit, the same thing would happen.
Yeah, and the same thing happened, used to happen at RT Road also.
I was sick of that.
Yeah, the same thing used to happen now a lot.
But this is bad though, when people's come off Hill State Boulevard, keep on into, that's not going in the ditch. That's hitting the person's house.
Yeah, we can go in and, and, and uh, put a sign up saying, uh, pavement in with the, and, and add one of the lights to it where they can, it's flashing. We also, I, I, I didn't bring the pictures with me, but we also, the board was, uh, approached by a gentleman about that intersection coming from the other way. We in turn went out and put signs up with flashing arrows, uh, we put, we changed the speed limit sign, uh, we put reduced speed ahead signs there, uh, we put the orange flashing lights with the, the signs with the bars on them, and we, uh, we put the, uh, speed limit signs there, where the lights are flashing, where trying to get their attention to slow down when they're coming into that intersection. So we did go ahead on and take care of that. And uh, we can do that from the, the other direction and make sure that double arrow sign is visible at the end of that road, and make sure that, uh, we prob, I don't know if it's on both sides, we can go back and put, uh, stop ahead signs on both sides of that empty road coming out, so it can be seen from both signs and stop signs from both sides. They just kinda light that intersection up when the traffic is coming into it, and hopefully that'll kinda make people aware. But I think that person had a, had, just had a little bit too much that night.
They had a little bit.
Well, the same thing hap- happened on Octop, where Octop Tea, actually that was a life lost where Octop Tea been down on refuge.
But thank you for being willing to, uh, look into that and see what we can do to slow that traffic down.
We'll, we'll look into it, and I'll, and uh, like I say, I'll, I'll put double signs on that to where it be more available, and we'll put the, uh, we'll light it up there with, uh, caution and, and stop sign.
And the only other thing that I have is, uh, Supervisor Trainer talking about pickup. Well, I'm wondering whether or not the pickup of trash is really working as well as it could be, um, something could be done to maybe improve how we're getting around to, uh, road pickup with, with, with trash. I see a lot of, uh, debris, a lot of trash, a lot of paper. In fact, individuals are throwing, I picked up a, a whole bag of trash this morning. It was thrown in the middle of the road, um, twenty-five, that was that, was that highway, tw- old twenty-five.
Yeah.
Had some bags of trash thrown in the road itself. So I know they doing a good job, but I'm wondering, what can we do to do better?
Well, we just have to, uh, I think we work with Sheriff Department and, and get, uh, them to kinda tighten up on the, on the pickup and try to get some more of those roads picked up. But yeah, people leave home with garbage on their car and they forget it, and it falls off.
I know Captain Word, and his crew do an outstanding job, and I, I, I think lots of that depends on manpower, you know, just how many inmates he might have at a given time. Any other questions for a, a road man?
Yeah, I was, um, speaking of, um, speed limit signs that were there, um, I got an email, when are they gonna finish, you know, down in Sturgis?
They, they got all of it, the officer said.
I got them.
They did the Tom Street, uh, Edward Street, didn't they?
I got a, I got a ca- I got a call and email this morning with the thirty-five limit signs and just not the lowered speed limit, and they said they did not get to them Friday, it's still up this morning.
Well, let me, let me, let me check on it, cause they were supposed to get all of those up on those three streets. Now, we only was doing three streets.
Yeah, I, I was about to say, he did say that he was picking up where the mayor, um, the area that she showed him. Now, I don't, I don't know if this, this, this speed limit is, is outside that area, but he, but he did, uh, say he would then put the speed limit, pick up the ones where she weren't, no one of those signs on those streets.
Yeah, I don't know, I know this is the woman that has been at their board meeting for the past month about the speed limit sign. It's her road, so I know her road was supposed to be on there, whether or not, you know, they showed it to her or not. But I'll, I'll send over the address and stuff to y'all, um, to make sure that that one was taken care of.
All right.
Vickers, is, is there, there's, I know this is coming, so the rubble strips compared to, I'm not in favor of these.
Well, we, 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 we use a new one.
You got a new?
Uh, that's, that's about this wide, it only rises two inches, and uh, they're not as, they're not as near as harsh on a vehicle.
Okay.
And that's what we had to go back and, we took up the old ones, and we took these down there and put them on, uh, New Hope Church Road. And since then, I think they've actually, you know, they're speed bump, but they're not just as, they're not as harsh.
They won't throw you off.
They won't throw you, yeah, they're just, they got a longer crossover, and, and they're only about two inches tall.
Do you think that's something that Sunset, that circle, horseshoe circle there could?
Yeah, right now, there's only just one side of it that's has a problem, and that's the first entrance. And, cause we went in there and did some asphalt overlay on it, and that even, I think that made it worse. They actually speed it up once we leveled it up. So that would be something that we probably.
Is the entirety of horseshoe circle in the county?
Yeah, all of it is in the county. So I just, all I, I did, I can do a order, and I think it takes about three weeks to get them back.
I just don't wanna see a child get something, I, I just want anybody hurt.
Well, yeah, we got some that's not as harsh and, you know.
There's a lot of walking that goes up and down through there, and a lot of.
And it's, oh, you, we were out there working, and I'm gonna tell you, you, they'll almost, they'll run over you if you ain't careful. You have to be very careful, they don't, they don't care anything about you being out there. They don't care about you holding up a sign, they just come down through that and curse you out when you get in the way. So it's, it's rough in there, I know for a fact it is.
I think Supervisor Carter probably would agree with it.
Yeah. If the board thinks I should order, I can go ahead on and get a set up and coming.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay, I'll get something coming.
People gonna be the ones that are not gonna decay, or they gonna?
No, they, they, they're, they're rubber, they made out of rubber, you.
Yeah, yeah.
You probably gonna need some when they get through.
They have more couple of questions from the board.
Let me carry that motion, motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Howard to in, in, install some non-aggressive, uh.
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps down horseshoe, uh, surface.
Yes.
Any other discussion, all in favor, motion passes you now.
All right.
We have more couple of something, and you guys have a couple of questions? I do wanna make sure for, for, and, and, and as far as the trash, are we gonna be required to pick up the trash? Uh, uh, so I know when people call about it, are, are, are we just gonna continue with the sheriff?
Do you got the half hour with the, the, uh?
We really don't.
No, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure when, when I get the call, when I need to.
Communicate with you.
Communicate with the sheriff.
Call the sheriff department.
And what about the bone truck, is it back yet to pick up all those limbs and stuff?
Oh, he's been, he's been on the road. There's a lot of stuff out there, but he's been on the road picking it up. I, I hope that second one get back, oh, I'm ready, it's, it's dire need, cause if that one goes down like it did, it was a lot of work involved in it, getting it back up.
I, I think we had conversation, but we, we didn't have a carry motion about purchase some additional non-aggressive ru- uh, rubble strips. Uh, you gonna need a lot of them, I'm sure. So have you already started purchasing them, or do you?
Well, I, 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 all I need to do is get it, and then, and uh, I'll get the order in for as many sets as you think we gonna need.
Right. I've got a motion made by Supervisor Trainer, and, and second by Supervisor Howard to order strips to, uh, slow traffic down, non-aggressive speed bumps for Helen Circle, uh, not Helen Circle, uh, horseshoe.
I guess you can admit that, just say for.
Yeah, we don't need a, we don't need a lot of them.
But I, I have made that any road necessary.
Are we changing our policy, are we doing through roads now? I mean, at one point, we were not doing through traffic roads, we were doing, uh, neighborhoods, and so.
We put any road necessary that, that is in accordance to our previous policies.
Good enough.
And some of these areas that we having problem with, with trash and all these other things, I mean, we just got this camera system, the basis of it, I think that would be a good place to look at evaluating some of these things, although we can't. Mississippi, I guess we, uh, I know you deal with speed as much, I don't even know, did anybody drop a bill this year for the sheriff and radar?
We get it every year.
Y'all, y'all deal with so much stuff, I get it every time.
We, we get it every year, but.
But I, I think.
It ain't going nowhere.
But I think things like this, as communities grow, and it give communities opportunity to kinda make their decision on themselves about certain things. And dealing with that truck, if y'all can, talk with the city and see if we getting in a jam where, where they would let us utilize their truck as far as helping us to pick up.
Well, we got, we got that one, that's, they actually fit in the bed on it now, so we should have it. I'm hoping that it will be back, because when we took it down there, uh, when they took it down there the first time, they let them do an evaluation on it, they was, the yard was topped out, but when they took it down at this time, it was only a few trucks. So I'm hoping that we'll have our second truck back here within a few weeks.
When you say back, is this that fire truck that you getting back to?
Uh, yeah.
In other words, we didn't have a second truck.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying.
Once we get this fire truck outfitted at that point, what?
We'll have, we'll have enough to keep up with everything that's going on, so that's what I'm saying. If you can work with the city, is able to, to help us out, because you know, one time we got into a little jam with the garbage truck, and they had kinda said that they would do, it worked itself out, so anyway, we can work with them and bring you all some relief, cause a lot of time, they always come to us asking for stuff. So now his opportunity was to go to them asking for something we need, and I think they would consider it and probably comply. I mean, it may be one day a week, they may run the truck throughout the county and pick up wherever key some to pick up.
I mean, it may be one day a week, they may run the truck throughout the county and pick up wherever keys some to pick up.
Uh, Mr. Carter, uh, there are some, um, debris, some limbs, tree limbs.
Okay.
Right at the intersection of, uh, Saint Mark and Reeves Road.
Okay.
I'll ask that that be picked up at. I think some of that is on counter, counter right away, so could you please check that out?
All right, we'll get a note of that rest now.
When you get on Reeves Road immediately, immediately when you get on Reeves Road, coming off Saint Mark, there's some debris up on the hillside, I think it's on counter, counter right away. I've been asked to remove that several times. Thank you for checking that out.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll make a note and give it to the truck to pick it up.
Anything else, uh, road man? Not needing a motion to accept road man report?
We did that.
Oh, we did that.
I did, I wouldn't owe me this thing. We get all your calls. All right.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Carter.
All right.
Thank you for the chance.
Appreciate you, Mr. Carter.
Just leave us.
The only thing I have is approval for the, um, travel to the M A P D, um, conference in Boise.
So... Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Williams, and I'm sure this will state for anyone who wants, who wants to go. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we've got, uh, county administrator, Mr. Carter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, got a number of things to go through. We'll start off with, uh, item number one. We've got two conferences that we need to get some folks moving to. We've got the ninety-sixth annual convention for the Mississippi Association of Supervisors Conference on June the ninth through the twelfth. Do we need to do these separately, Sharon?
No, we can do them together.
All right, and then we have the Naco ninetieth annual conference and expo, uh, July the eleventh through the fourteenth. I included in your packets, uh, the agendas and the flyers associated with each of those conferences. If I could get y'all's approval on those.
What approval on both conferences? Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor trainer. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously for trainer.
I also have in your report, uh, just for your information and, and to get it included in the record, um, the October County Lake Dam M D E Q findings report. Now, last month I had provided to you, uh, the inspection. And then this month, after I sent off that inspection to M D E Q, uh, they replied with a letter determining that the, uh, dam at, uh, the county lake remains in unsatisfied condition due to deficiencies listed in the report. Um, I'd like to get y'all to acknowledge the receipt on that and get it in the record.
Motion, second by supervisor trainer, uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Third item is, uh, I need offer, well, we, we did this already, um, we, we already did this one excepting the state aid project, uh, Longview. Uh, item number four, um, what's, what this is, is you, you got, what y'all had authorized me to engage, uh, what's the name of that? Architectonics, um, which is Thomas Stewart to take a look at that administrative building next door. I provided for your review, uh, his, his proposal, uh, some initial drafts and, and an estimate of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, he gave us two options. One was to fix the floor in there, which would be to, to take it all up, to take it down and redo that thing. And the other was to patch the floor in there, and depending on which option, I'm recommending that we go with the option number one.
Replace.
Yeah, we, we need to get that thing fixed and we won't have to worry about it no more. Um, I, I'm open to discussion on your ideas as to what the layout and all of that looks like.
We'll discuss it for a moment. I'll make the motion and move forward.
Second, motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Williams, that we move forward with which layout?
Replacing the floor.
Which layout?
And this layout that was provided in your package.
With the layout that, that's been presented. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
I hope this experience works out well, though we can look at Phyllis Long after, after this experience works out well. Maybe with the same group, the same approach, Mr. Carter.
I, I like this gentleman so far. Uh, if he proves we can trust him, then we'll certainly ha- have us a good, uh, resource that we, we could possibly work with.
Uh, we still, uh, paying for utilities over at Phyllis Long.
We have to keep the lights on in order to, in order to have it insured.
It's just like someone that's actually coming in.
It ain't much of utility. I mean, it's literally just a little old light bulb. I mean, we're not doing much over there as far as utilities. Um, did that answer your question, sir? Oh, it's, it's okay. Um, item number five, uh, comptroller is requesting a, a, a budget amendment increasing, uh, the office equipment budget. Line item number nine nineteen, as a result of receiving sixty-three hundred dollars in reimbursement from Mississippi State University. Uh, this is for the sheriff's department, and it's got to do with some work that they do in supporting games.
The gaming track.
Yeah, right. Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Little. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
The city of Starful is, uh, looking to secure a state and tribal assistance grant. Uh, they need us to, uh, pass a resolution in support of their application. And then to get a letter from, uh, supervisor Howard, the board president, in support of their application. Um, supervisor Howard, make sure we get that signed today, uh, that, that's due today.
And this is the same as last year?
Same as last year. I just copy pasted the same resolution, the same letter and changed the dates to protect them.
So who? Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Little, uh, that we let off support, resolution of support. Uh, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Um, I had a conversation with the constables. They came to see me at that time of year where they have to turn in all of their reports. One of the conversations I had, uh, was regarding a radio that, that they were had, that, um, one of them was having difficulty with, and in the process of having the conversation, uh, it came to our attention that everybody is converting to miswind radios. And our constable service has been left out of that discussion, and no plans were made to convert them. Uh, we're not careful, we're gonna get them out there where they can't communicate with some folks. So, uh, what we've done, I work with Kristen, we've got two quotes together to try and, uh, get all of their radios up to date so that they can, uh, as they're going about the county serving and, and doing their work, that they, they would not be left out there without communication and unable to get some backup. Um, the total cost, the, on the, uh, the lowest quote is nine thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and two cents. The sheriff's department, I'm gonna look back over my shoulder, Eddie, sheriff's department has agreed to fund this, uh, purchase of this equipment in, uh, concert with their three sixty-five project.
Do we need a motion to authorize?
Second.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor trainer. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Item number eight, I have invoices, uh, that are ready for your review and approvals. Do we need to do any of these individually?
I had some question about, uh, C.
Number C.
You don't have to call a name, but, um, I just didn't understand why that would be an award.
So the way I understand it is Masit Insurance engages and pays attorneys to represent us on behalf of these suits, right?
Right.
And there for each, depending on the type of suit, there is a deductible. And so what Masit, uh, is now coming back to us with is our deductible for the amounts of monies that have been paid representing us in these cases.
These are not to, these are to the attorney.
Right.
Well, we're paying it to Masit, because they've already paid the attorney and they're asking us to pay our deductible.
This is not a settlement to individuals.
So I need to bring up each of these individually, Sharon?
I make a motion, we approve item number eight. Item number eight.
Yeah, I second. With this being so many, we need to have a different board order for each one.
Okay, we can have that.
Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Little to pay item eight. All in favor?
All right.
Motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion, we approve item B.
Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Little, that we pay item B. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Motion pay C.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Little, that we pay item C. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion, we pay item D.
Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Little, that we pay item D. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Motion pay E.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor trainer, pay E. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Pay F.
Motion by supervisor trainer, second, uh, Williams, second by supervisor trainer, that we pay F. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Already discussed borrowing dirt, dirt construction, motion pay, uh, G.
Motion to pay G by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor trainer. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Motion to pay item H.
Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor, uh, Little, pay item H. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
What happens when we have three weeks to wait?
Motion pay number nine.
Second.
It's been motioned to pay credit card, make credit card payments. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Right, trainer.
Trainer, Williams, second, I mean, Williams, trainer.
Motion to pay, uh, payroll changes.
Second.
Motion to authorize payroll changes by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor trainer. Any discussion?
On there twice.
All in favor? That motion passes unanimously. Make payroll change. Grant payroll change.
I did not bring that.
Make a motion that we pay the bills.
Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Little, that we pay the bills. All in favor? That we approve claim, Doc, and all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
So if you have questions, that concludes my report.
Make a motion, we accept county administrator's report.
Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Williams, that we accept county administrator's report. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Hillis Bitson was supposed to be back over here. Uh, she was needing you to sign a number of documents that relate to being reimbursed.
Now, we, she, I signed some, we did get other meetings.
Never mind.
Okay, we're now down to our board attorney, Attorney Robinson.
Just a, a quick update legislative, as y'all know, the, uh, legislature will be going back in probably thirty days or somewhere in that realm. Uh, any of our projects that were, we were asking for, the truth is, I don't know where we're gonna end up with it. I'm just gonna be real honest with you. Um, I've heard that there won't be any, I've heard that, that there would be some. Uh, I will say this, we're either going to be, uh, included in our projects, which when I say we, I mean, all of the, the members that have, have, uh, projects, or there will be zero projects. So if we're not included in some of the projects, um, I won't be in favor of any of them. Um, our, I think our projects that we have for roads or whatever else that we're doing in our community are just as valid as anything else that's going on. Um, but that's, that's a fight that we will have in the next couple of months. Um, as far as the lawsuits that we have, there's, they're pretty much in the same place the last time we talked. Uh, as you see, that, that, that we did have several out there that our insurance carriers are, uh, talking to us about. One issue that, that, that is, may come up in the future that, that, um, that we need to be aware of is, is, is we get our contracts together, um, I think that, uh, Carl's got a, in, in our, our, uh, the administrator's got a great idea in terms of putting our contracts in space. I'll, I will say that I support that a hundred percent. I would, I hope that we're able to, to do that. Uh, if y'all have questions about specific lawsuits, I don't wanna bring them up and I don't wanna put y'all in a situation we wanted the executive session to talk about. But if you do have questions about it, call me individually and we'll talk about it. Uh, but, but that's all I have for the moment. Um, we do have some things that are pending that, that hopefully will be over with in the next three to six months, uh, some lawsuits. But as you can tell, they haven't been finished yet. Now, y'all being billed for, for some of this stuff through our insurance carriers as well, so hopefully we'll move forward with that.
Uh, there is a particular invoice, and I won't name the company that's, that's, uh, that was presented, uh, for payment. But, uh, we were of the understanding that it had been paid. Is that something we need to discuss? The, the architectural firm, uh...
That was an email sent in regards to that. And, and I forwarded the email to the firm that there's some information they need to submit, so they said they, they wouldn't do that. So I think that's all that's there.
Is this the, is this the one in Columbus?
Right.
Okay, I'm, I'm on the same page.
Just, just a little slight miscommunication, but I think it'll work itself out.
Okay.
Uh, anything else for our attorney? If not, we're down to county supervisor business, uh, supervisor Little, District Four.
Um, I don't really have anything new, you know, to say, except we, we just have a lot of work going on and trying to get those bridges open and the concrete and get guys that's doing work and wanting to get it done, um, but maybe first, um, and...
Want to give a little update about a little meeting, other?
Oh, yeah, um, well, we've went, we've had, um, I know all of y'all have probably had the same issues and stuff, um, going on that, um, you know, we've talked about having, you know, the slaughter association, the association that's on. And we've had, um, you know, three public hearings on it, that we've talked, um, different things about codes or guns and, you know, everything. But I think we're all kind of, you know, leaning toward commercial, you know, commercial codes, because we have a lot of people with apartment complexes that are coming in and wanting to be built and different things. Um, we've met with, um, with the city on how they handle, you know, handle that and what kind of departments and stuff they have. And anyhow, they said that, um, if that's something we want to go ahead and adopt, you know, um, you know, some, you know, some things that, you know, when they have to look at overlays and, um, things like that, but they are willing to, um, you know, because the way the state statute runs, it says that you, you know, can, um, sub out to a third party. So they were willing to help us out getting started if we didn't, you know, we're gonna initiate anything to where, um, they did it. And, and their, their code would not be our stuff. We would have a, you know, whatever we did. But they have people that can, you know, help have to take them until where I can get up and running. Um, so I was just, you know, what did, what did you think about all that?
Same thing, and I think, uh, can, Mr. County Minister, Ms. Carter had mentioned about doing a little bit more due diligence with, uh, talking to slaughter and willing hand, and they're going to give us some guidance on how to approach it. I think it's just something that's just a sign of the times. I mean, because of growth, we're disciplined. So I don't think we need to be fearful of it. We just need to be, uh, guiding it, so it'll be something to be devoted for the entire county and city. Because it does impact the city also.
Yeah, and we gotta think about ordinances and things like that, you know, with, you know, building out the county, because our, our sheriff's department is very, you know, very limited, you know, and, you know, and their resources and stuff. And so, you know, if something's gonna be built out there that has to have, you know, extra presence and things like that, we just, we just need to be mindful, you know, of those things going, you know, going forward, because we are necessary in that county. And, you know, we, we, we just have a lot of growth and a lot of interest in continued growth, which is good. And we don't wanna stifle that growth, but we want, we wanna be able to manage. So, um, you know, I thought, I thought it went well.
Good, good. I think that's, that, that's definitely warranty of discussion that, that you can sort of move forward at a pretty good pace. Uh, and I've always, I've, I've mentioned that... Uh, and I've always, I've, I've mentioned that as we're, as we're talking about this and, and looking at this. I think we need to incorporate some type of impact study. You know, if, if, if you've got, uh, a developer that wants to come in and develop a certain area. I think we need to have an impact study done. What, you know, what, what's it gonna do to that area? Is it gonna, how much more traffic is it gonna put on in that area? How much pressure is it gonna put on our drainage system? Uh, you know, is, is, will there need to be an increased security presence in that area? I think we just need to have an impact study done on whatever area they're proposing a development and see, you know. And, and we need to draft it some way. I don't know if, if that cost needs to be, uh, placed on the developer. Or if the county needs to share that cost. Uh, but I don't think the county is about the entire cost of that. But I think all of that needs to, you know, we, we, we need to discuss all that as we are.
You got another utility with water and sewer and electrical, electrical components. So you got three other components right there, we'll have to be considered.
That has to be considered. So that, I think, I think any development that, that's being proposed, there needs to be some sort of impact study.
And we need to include our water and if we have sewer into how this is projected out. One of the things that, that we're gonna have a problem with is a lot of the stuff that didn't want to comply with what the City of Starful's ordinance were, went out into the county. And I'm not suggesting that's a, a bad thing, but it's also creates problems. You can see with apartment complexes currently. And then you can just point at an apartment complex in the county and you'll see the road issues that, that end up having a problem or that, or, or having issues with that. And one of the thoughts we can do is within a couple of miles outside the city limits, have a one set and then, cause we do have people that live in the county that lived out there for a reason. As we all, as we all know, sometimes people prefer to, to not have as many, but the closer you get to the city limits, the more you're gonna have problems.
You are, and, and the more, you know, that you're there, if, if, if you're getting, you know, city water and sewer and you got stoplights. You're kinda in the city. You just moved out there to avoid any, you know, you know, codes or ordinances or whatever you didn't like, you know, to build it cheaper. But at some point, it would be, you know, probably, you know, sucked into the city.
Well, I, I, you know, we, I think we ran into this situation, and I don't see how we, we, we grant somebody, uh, the right to move forward. If the city's gotta furnish them utilities. You know, that's where the city is saying, well, if you're gonna have to, if you're gonna use the city utilities, then you've gotta buy it. And there's really nothing we, as a county, that we can do to override that. I mean, if they, if they've gotta be furnished utilities by the city, and the city is, is, is requesting certain things, I don't see how we can override it.
It's a, it's a contractual obligation, and some of this stuff, there's a reason for it. I mean, especially for sewer and water. Those are just real, real issues that, that, that there's a reason. They may be requiring a certain pipe or a certain whatever. So I don't disagree with your assessment.
So if they want, if they want city sewer and water, they have to comply with the entirety of the city's building code?
I think the situation we ran into.
That'd be a quick way to get us off the hook with a quick. But now, we have certain sides.
No, I, I, I guess I'm asking, is that what the city's demanding in order to hook that?
I don't think they're demanding anything right now. I think what we need to do is sit down, because this, this conversation has, we haven't necessarily been willing to look at the big picture in terms. We're, now we're realizing a- as a county that we're running into some problems, especially, I mean, these apartment complexes are, are really straining. Uh, a lot of the, the, the things that we can do. Um, so I think that, that moving forward, that may be the case. We may go to that, that level.
In regards to that.
Absolutely.
Um, I had a, I had a call during the Christmas break, and that's when lines really.
Must be everywhere.
Have problems. Christmas break and New Year's.